Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thanks for being here this evening. I'd like to call this regular business meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order tonight. It is Monday, March 20, 2023. Thanks for being here, as I said. We will start our meeting as we always do. If you can and if you're able, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thank you. Thanks for the folks who are joining us here in the council chambers, and I know there's probably a lot of people watching online tonight as well. First order of business tonight is to approve tonight's agenda, and on our agenda, we have, under item two, our introductory items. We have three items. We have an introduction of new employees, and then we're going to hear a couple work plans for 2023. Item 2.2 is the Parks Arts and Recreation Commission work plan, and item 2.3 is the Sustainability Commission 2023 work plan. Under our consent item, Consent Business, we have 15 items under the Consent Business. Councilmember Muah will have our Consent Business for the first time. Looking forward to hearing from you. Very good. Under item four, Hearings, Resolutions, and Ordinances, we have three of those. Item 4.1 is a public hearing regarding Chapter One of the City Code related to enforcement of ordinances and laws. We'll hear from Deputy City Attorney Peter Zuniga and Chief Uli Seal on those changes. Item 4.2 is a public hearing regarding an expansion of Luther Hyundai, and item 4.3, which I think a lot of folks are probably here for this evening, a public hearing regarding a city code amendment regarding a single and two-family residential standards and comprehensive plan text amendments. Under item five, we will have a discussion on franchise fees, and then we will wrap up the evening as we always do with our city council policy and issue update. Counsel, any questions? Any additions, subtractions? Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wondering if it's appropriate to consider a change in the order of ordinance for the public hearings, given the interest in the amount of folks that are in attendance, potentially move the 4.3 to 4.1?
Do I hear that as a motion, councilmember?
Well, I asked about the appropriateness of offering.
You certainly may. I mean, we have done that in the past, and we certainly could. If you would like to move that.
All right, second.
A motion in a second to adjust the.
I would move that, thank you.
The agenda in that way. Very good. Counsel, any additional changes? So, counsel, hearing that, I would move approval of tonight's agenda, noting the change of moving item 4.3 to the top of the list in, under our Hearings, Resolutions, and Ordinances. So we'll go item 4.3, 4.1, and 4.2. That is our amended agenda, and I've moved it. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to adopt tonight's agenda as amended and as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero, and we have an agenda for this evening. Item 2.1 on our agenda is the introduction of new employees. We have three new employees we're going to be welcoming and saying hello to this evening. Carla Henderson is going to serve as the master of ceremony for this, and good evening, Ms. Henderson. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I have the pleasure of introducing three new community development employees. We're going to start with Natalie Barrett. She is our HRA Office Coordinator, and she began at the end of February. So she comes to us with almost a decade in leadership experience at Twin Cities Orthopedics, and with the last three years in real estate at Property Executives Realty. She's almost Bloomington-born and raised, moved here at a very young age, and has been calling Bloomington home ever since, and she went through Bloomington Public Schools. But it's a Bloomington family affair because she is married to our deputy chief in the fire department and has three small children and loves Minnesota outdoors and can cook just about anything. And I understand that you will use your relationship with your husband to get information on, you know, stuff that's going on in the city, so we love that you have that connection. So, welcome.
I think it will serve us in both ways.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. It is a pleasure to meet you. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself. I am excited to serve the city as it has served me for almost my entire life. Like Carla said, I have extensive background in management and real estate, including software implementation and office expansion, so I'm excited to contribute to the HRA Department and the city.
And we're very glad to have you. The HRA is going to be busy this year, as they are every year, but I think they're going to be especially busy this year with their refocused responsibilities that they do have, and glad to have you on board. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and next we have Cameron Panshop. So Cameron began at the end of this February, and while he is new to the position, he is not new to the city because he worked as an intern in environmental health over the summer of 2019. So he comes to us as an environmental health specialist. He has a bachelor's degree in environmental science from the University of Minnesota de Luth, and more recently, he worked at Hennepin County's Environmental Health Division as a food pool and lodging inspector, and I will tell you, Lynn Moore and the team are thrilled to have him back on the code enforcement and housing inspection team. So, Cameron?
Good evening, Cameron. Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, it's certainly great to be back, meeting a lot of new city personnel and staff, certainly coming back to a lot of familiar faces, but super excited to be here. Glad to be back.
I'm glad to have you. I'm glad we made that type of impression on you as an intern that you wanted to come back to Bloomington. Glad to see you back.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome. Thanks.
All right, and last but not least is Sean Lundie, who is serving as our Special Projects and Initiatives Manager due to Barb Wolf's promotion as Assistant Port Authority Administrator. He started the city a few weeks ago on March 3. So Sean just recently received his MBA from Carlson at the University of Minnesota, and before coming to Bloomington, he worked for the president of the World Cocoa Foundation, an organization that strives for a sustainable cocoa industry. Prior to that, Sean joined the Peace Corps after double majoring in global resource systems and nutrition at Iowa State. He grew up in St. Paul. He's currently a first lieutenant in the Army National Guard, and I will tell you, he is using those skills. He led his first meeting today, and at the top of the agenda, it said bluff, B-L-U-F, and he said, "That's what they do in the Army. Bottom line up front." And so that's how he kicked off the meeting this morning, and he enjoys spending his free time outdoors, going on hikes, biking, skiing, and camping. So, welcome, Sean.
Welcome, Sean.
Thank you. I'm very excited to be here. Yeah, as Carla said, in the Army, we do not waste time, so bottom line up front. I'm very excited to work here and see what I can do with community development. So, thank you.
Excited to have you. Thank you for your service, and thanks for being here in Bloomington.
That is all. Thank you.
Very good. Natalie, Cameron, Sean, welcome. Thanks for being here this evening, and welcome to the city of Bloomington. Item 2.2 on our agenda is a review of the 2023 work plan for our Parks Arts and Recreation Commission, and I think our Parks and Arts and Recreation Director, Ann Cattrie, is going to kick us off, and the Park Vice Chair, Andy Hoffman, is going to join her as well. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you very much. I am very pleased to introduce Andy Hoffman. Andy has been the vice chair of the Parks Arts and Recreation Commission. The commission is doing just amazing work for the past few years, especially focusing on the park system master plan, but I'll let Andy give you an introduction to what we're working on in '23.
Good evening, Vice Chair Hoffman. How are you?
Thank you, Mayor. I am doing well.
Good. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, and I was here last year with the same presentation, but we've got a few more things on our work plan because, as you can imagine, with the Parks Master Plan now in place, rubber hits the road, and it's a little bit of a heavier lift, but I'll go through this somewhat quickly, but obviously feel free to ask questions, comments at the end. The first item on the Parks, or on the work plan for the year is park projects. So the two that are at the front of this are at Bryant and Treppa, doing essentially park redevelopments with new amenities. Those are the two main focuses, but there's a lot more to it. We'll also be doing natural resource planning and trying to develop a template for future park shelters that were being standardized moving forward. And as you know, the Parks Master Plan, which identifies all the projects that are underway or hopefully upcoming, it's been a work in progress for many years. I've been a part of it for two years, but I know for at least a year before I was on the commission, it was well underway, so now we're starting to see that come to fruition. The second item in our work plan is the 10-year capital improvement plan. That'll come before council this fall. Essentially, it'll outline the proposed timing and scope of projects within the Parks Master Plan. It'll identify additional park projects specifically related to the facilities, maintenance, and other amenities. The third item on the work plan is a cult, I always have a tough time, cultural arts support grants. So this has been around for a long time, probably predates the majority of the people in the room. Members of the park commission, members of the community, other agencies, all get together and get to review the grant submissions every year. Those recommendations for grant recipients come before the council for your approval. This year, Daryl Egger, who's a park commissioner with me, he'll be our representative on that group. The fourth item on the work plan, one that you've probably seen past years, is the update to park and recreation fees for 2024. Obviously, the goal, as it's always been, is to remain competitive but comparable to neighboring communities, so we'll be reviewing those, and that'll be coming before council also later this year, obviously well before 2024 for your review and approval. The fifth item on the work plan this year is joint projects with the Sustainability Commission. As you can imagine, especially in the Park Master Plan, there's a lot of natural resource management that's outlined in that, and there's a lot of overlap between our scope and the scope of the Sustainability Commission. We don't have a defined outcome for this yet, but given the overlap, it just makes sense for us to try and find opportunities for collaboration, so we'll be getting together with them and seeing if there's things that we can do together as opposed to working in silos. The sixth item is park maintenance and operations plan. So with park maintenance now falling under the purview of the Parks Department, we've got to put a plan to it, and a lot of that is what is the scope and the timing of everything from how often are the lawns mowed to everything else you could imagine goes along with park maintenance. So we'll be reviewing and recommending a park maintenance and operations plan this year. The seventh item of 10, we're getting there, is the Park Arts and Recreation Award of Excellence. So this too, it's an award that's been around for a very long time. Every year, the city solicits and gets nominations for people to go above and beyond. A lot of these are volunteers, people that give time, money, you know, we've had people who donated a lot towards, well, I'm not going to say this right, pickleball was one of them that stands out. So we review those nominations, and we pick a recipient every year. However, in recent years, participation has been down significantly, to the point where last year we had one extremely credible, well worthwhile nomination, however, there was only one of them. There's a lot of time and effort that goes into soliciting these nominations, reviewing these nominations, and we need to try and figure out what's the right path forward for this award. Is it refitting the criteria, putting more marketing push behind it? What is the future? So we hope to determine that. Hopefully, I think in April, we've got that as a discussion topic. The eighth is one we're excited about is an adopted park program. So this is a program that exists in different ways in different communities across the metro area. We've got to put a plan behind it. A lot of people make great contributions, and they don't necessarily adopt a park or get the recognition or any of that, but to do this, we want to make a standardized process. So we want to include an application process, expectations if you do adopt a park, what does that really mean? What kind of recognition do you get? What do we not want volunteers to do in our parks? Because as you can imagine, there's probably things that we don't want them to do. So we want to recommend a process for community members that where they can bring projects to forward, and we can review and approve those. Number nine is Three Rivers Park District Partnership. I think most people would probably look at Highland Greens and say that's a success, at least in my opinion, it's still there. So we want to try and see if there are other opportunities, specifically with regional parks and trails. They've got a huge footprint in this city as do we, and there's a lot of overlap, much like the Sustainability Commission, so we want to just try and find additional opportunities for partnership with Three Rivers. And last, but definitely not least, donations policy. So this too, it's a matter of covering up with a standardized process. You know, we want to solicit donations, we want people to be able to give when they want to give, we want to give them recognition that they need, but we want it to be a process that's got standards, that has predetermined locations and scopes. So things like memorial benches, potentially trees, do they come with plaques? Do they go in predetermined locations? Do we have a set number of them? With all the work that went into the Parks Master Plan, we don't want people just coming and saying, "I want a bench here," and necessarily getting it. We want it to be consistent, and we want to put the thought behind it that it needs. With that, I probably skipped a few notes, but I talked fast because we do have a lot of things on our agenda this year, so we'll open it up for questions.
You do indeed have a lot on your agenda. Thank you for that, and thank you for running through that. Counsel, questions of the vice chair? Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you. Nice to see you again, Andy.
Yeah, good to see you too.
And you too, always. A pleasure. Love talking about parks, and I'm excited to see what you all are doing this year. Question regarding your, as it relates to the adopted park program and the donations policy, one of the things that we've talked about a little bit is, you know, that could be community members, but there also is an opportunity for sponsorships at the corporate level or other things of that nature. Are you encompassing all of that into your views here, and if so, can you share a little bit about any early thoughts on that, or is it truly in like the beginning stages?
Maybe a little bit too early. I think we'd probably be open to that. I would at least, but yeah, to be determined.
Is it part of the plan to assess that, or is it a novel idea?
Yeah, I think that's definitely in the purview. Yeah.
Councilmember Delisandro, members of the council, I think it's safe to say that we would be happy to explore that. We definitely want to get a basic donations policy kicked off this year. That would be something more along the lines of what Andy is describing with benches, trees, you know, park pavilion-type buildings. We definitely want to kick that off first, but we could certainly explore other donations, naming policies. It's another kind of different scope and purview, but it's something we could definitely do.
Yeah, thank you. They are definitely different, which is why I was curious about whether they were encompassed. Thank you.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is really fantastic. I'm really excited to see the work that you all are continuing to do, so building off past work, but then also the new items related to the Parks Master Plan and really getting rolling on that. It's just, it's really exciting to see. These things take a long time to kind of get off the ground, get all the pieces in place, and so really looking forward to seeing this unfold. And I guess I just had a comment, and this kind of goes to our conversation before the meeting, you know, we have a lot of organizations in Bloomington who utilize our parks, our sports and athletic organizations, arts organizations, and so I would just hope that, you know, in these initiatives, that there are plans to engage with those organizations too, to leverage the partnerships and to get their input on what different things could look like. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, you guys are doing a lot. So I don't want to add anything on at all, but just wanted to just add a couple questions with the natural resources plans, kind of what's the vision in terms of, you know, if we come around next year this time, what will we expect to see done with that? And then I know that in the past, that past councils had worked to try to update, you know, with that capital planning, all of the equipment across the city, and we had kind of a rotating, and I'm just curious, and I don't have to answer this now, but I'm just curious, you know, where we're at with that, and if we're in that cycle where we kind of need to re-up that, where we redo all that equipment across the city again. So those are my two questions, but nice work here. Lot of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Lohman, as it relates to the equipment, are you referring to like vehicle-type equipment or park amenity-type equipment?
Park amenity is for young kids. I think we had, we did, what was it, playground equipment? Sorry, I wasn't specific about that, but that's what I meant.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't want to get into the other stuff. That's another good question, unless you want to talk about it.
It will all be included in our capital improvement plan, for sure.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo Councilmember Delisandro's point with regards to corporate sponsorship and other revenue sources, something I've talked about for several years, and I would just like to see that moved up in priority. I think there is a significant amount of untapped money out there for the community to fund some of the things that we want to do in park and rec, and so I think that, you know, if we want to do stuff, let's find a way to fund it, and I think the business community is ready and prepared to do that.
Thank you, councilmember. Counsel, anything else? If not, thank you so very much. Appreciate the work that you've put in, appreciate the work that you're going to be doing. If you could share our thanks with the rest of the Parks Arts and Recreation Commission for the outstanding work that they do, it is greatly appreciated. We don't get a chance to thank them often enough, and thank you for being here again this year and this evening and presenting your work plan for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, I would look for a motion to adopt the 2023 work plan for the Parks Arts and Recreation Commission.
So moved?
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Delisandro to adopt the Parks Arts and Recreation Commission 2023 work plan. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Item 2.3 on our agenda is, along the same lines, a work plan discussion for our Sustainability Commission, and we have coming forward Emma Stress, who's our Sustainability Coordinator, and Deanna White, our Sustainability Commission Chair. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight. My name's Deanna White, and I am the current chair of the Sustainability Commission. I want to thank the council for the opportunity to come here tonight and talk to you a little bit about some of the work we have planned for the upcoming year. Oh, the clicker. I also want to thank the commission for your continued commitment to sustainability in Bloomington. The commission is a relatively young one. We're just entering our, just finished our seventh year in existence as a commission in Bloomington, and we're very proud of the work that we've been able to do, but we recognize there's still a lot of work that needs to be done. So this year, I want to talk a little bit about just the overall goals of the work plan before I turn it over to Emma to go into a little bit of the detail. I want to make sure that you understand that this work plan is a commission work plan, and it does not represent all of the work and sustainability that is happening across Bloomington. We've been very fortunate that the staff of the city of Bloomington has really made an effort to incorporate sustainability across work plans, across departments, across divisions, and we have a lot of sustainability work that's embedded in the work of the city. It's not reflected in this work plan because we really focused on making this work plan something that the Sustainability Commission is responsible for. So you're going to see in this work plan not only some specific goals, but you're also going to see that the commissioners are stepping up to take leadership and take responsibility for making sure that the work is moving forward, which is a little bit different than what we've done the last couple of years. As with many things, COVID-19 and everything that was going on had an impact on our work plan, and we're excited to be moving into the next phase of work on a lot of the initiatives that have been started over the last couple of years. So we just want to say too that we recognize that we have declared a climate emergency here in the city and that we have not done enough, that we recognize we need to do more. You'll see, as Emma does her presentation, that the commission made a concerted effort to identify which of the initiatives on our work plan were directly related to climate sustainability, and we will continue to keep that as a focus and a center for the work that we do as a commission. And so while we recognize that we have made progress, we have not made enough progress, and we want to make sure you understand that we do prioritize climate and climate work across all of the different areas of work that we do on the commission. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our incredibly capable staff to talk about the specifics of the work plan.
Thank you, Chair White.
Chair White.
Is this one working too? Yeah, okay. Am I doing something wrong with the clicker? There we go. So tonight, we will go over who's on the Sustainability Commission, highlights from last year, and then the proposed work plan. So we have 11 members on the Sustainability Commission, two are reserved for young adults. We currently have Commissioner Revlo and Locken in those positions. We have one council member liaison, which is Councilmember Lohman, and then we have eight other members with our chair, Deanna White. Many talents and skills across various areas of sustainability. Highlights from last year, and we have the stars highlighting the climate change mitigation efforts. So starting with ecological land stewardship, or jumping to energy, I know it's one of my favorites. So we have, in the spring, a garlic mustard poll. We had a buckthorn bust in the fall that we had about 85 community members show up to. We had a fall seed collection event, and then really, the commission spent a lot of time working with staff and advising on the natural resources prioritization and management strategies for city parks. Then for energy, last April, we launched the new part of the time-of-sale program to include 11 metrics of energy disclosure to have a customized report for residents that are purchasing a home, and as of March, over 1,000 households have gone through that program, receiving information about how to make those updates and get connected with resources. For our largest properties, for commercial multifamily and public buildings, we launched the large building benchmarking program last year as well, and 85 buildings last year participated and benchmarked their energy use, and that information is really critical for us to then be able to see who has opportunities to make upgrades and connect resources to them. So that program will grow this year with more buildings being added. And then finally, we had our Energy Resource Nights, where the city partnered with local community groups to provide opportunities for residents to learn about energy resources that were available to them, and this was really an eye towards the commission's focus on environmental justice and equity, making sure that we leverage grant funding to be able to provide translation and really focus on the income qualified programs that are available in Bloomington. And then we have, for solid waste, the big launch of the curbside organics program, we have 26% of households that are in the residential solid waste program participating. The goal for this year is 35%. We had the citywide recycling drop-off event that almost 1,000 vehicles participated in. We had a significant turnout for that, so you can see all the bikes in the picture. We had our first garden tool swap and compost giveaway, so that residents who are participating in the organics program can benefit from that compost in their gardens, and we also continued organics recycling education, highlighting the poster contest last spring. In addition to some of the initiatives that the commission specifically called out as focus areas, the commission also is always available to provide feedback to different departments and committees on various initiatives in the city. So this is a reflection of some of the presentations that the commission received and provided feedback at their monthly meetings. Onto this year's work plan. So the commission identified five priority areas. We have ecological land stewardship, which includes water, energy, transportation, solid waste, and environmental justice. So for ecological land stewardship, the three initiatives are review and revise city codes related to native plantings in residential areas, continuing hosting and supporting the community events like the garlic mustard poles and tree plantings and seed collections, and then work on outreach and educational materials around the conservation of water. For energy, we have evaluate the feasibility of solar on city facilities, and we also have researching barriers of completing residential energy efficiency projects, and this is the next step of that time-of-sale energy disclosure to help people really follow through with those projects. For transportation, we have support and promote bicycle connectivity and safety, and supporting and promoting the public transportation system. And then for environmental justice, this is something the commission wanted to incorporate in everything that the commission is focusing on, but specifically calling out to focus on identifying tools or creating tools to better help the work groups integrate environmental justice. but specifically calling out to focus on identifying tools or creating tools to better help the work groups integrate environmental justice into the commission's efforts. An example of this is having Faith Jackson come and help train in the commission on the racial equity impact assessment and other tools city staff have started to use. And then also invite speakers from local organizations to contribute perspectives and organize trainings. And then for solid waste, we have assist with the promotion of multifamily recycling, continuing the organics program outreach, and assisting with a study of garbage and recycling rates. And then making sure with all of this on the work plan, still to reserve time so that at the monthly meetings, there are the opportunities to serve as that resource for things that come up throughout the year from other committees and boards and task forces. So as Chair White mentioned, this work plan is really owned by the commission with staff support. But as we said in the planning process, it's thinking of 80% commission, 20% staff, recognizing that there's many other initiatives that are going on, especially around climate. We have the active transportation plan we're working on right now, the EV infrastructure study, tracking the federal and state climate grants and applying to those. We'll be hiring and onboarding to new sustainability specialists around climate and solid waste soon, and then continuing to do the energy conservation outreach with the utility programs and state programs. And we couldn't conclude without pausing to give a big thanks to one of our commissioners who's retiring. Tim Sandry has served six years on the commission and was the chair for the first six years of the commission. So thanks so much for all of the time that he volunteered in service to the city. And then also thanks to our current chair, who pours a lot of time and effort into leading the commission and is a pleasure to work with. So with that, I'll, we'll pause for questions, and the proposed motion is above.
Thank you, thanks for the presentation. And yeah, much like all of our boards and commissions, you've got a busy year ahead of you. So good for you folks and looking forward to it. Councilmember Lowman, anything to add as a member of the Sustainability Commission?
I think I don't want to, I want to say one thing, just we're really thinking, you know, really yourself. I know that you have been quite passionate about this stuff. And I know that there's been some of us who've been able to kind of drive it into existence. And then also, Tim Sandry, and all his work that he's done to help to kind of put this thing together, his, his voice will be missed. We certainly are with certainly capable leadership now, but I wanted, didn't want to miss that opportunity to, to thank both yourself for your leadership around sustainability and then also Tim Sandry. And there's certainly other folks on this council who've played their roles as well, and I don't want to diminish that either. So kind of looking around thinking, because we wouldn't be where we're at today without all their, all of our support working together.
Thank you, Councilmember Lowman. And I would echo that thanks to, to Tim Sandry, who was one of the driving forces to get the Sustainability Commission established in the first place in Bloomington and has been, has shown great leadership on this topic for, for a number of years. So he will certainly be missed. But he's, I think he's still in the community, so I'm sure we'll tap him whenever we can.
We still have his number.
We still, we know where he is. Council, any questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick here. The energy disclosure, both commercial and residential, do we have any data on how many people move forward with any improvements based on what they learned?
So I'm meeting with the staff this week. We've started to track how many have called the helpline. And then we'll be getting CenterPoint and Excel's data for 2022. However, that will start to show, but as we know, if you move in October, you probably haven't, you know, completed a project that's going to be on the data for this year. But that's something we're definitely starting to track.
Okay, great. Thank you for tracking that, I appreciate that. And then solar, you were talking about on facilities. Has there been any discussion or look at the parking areas? I didn't know if it was specific to the building facilities, or would that also include parking areas?
We're just starting, I think that's open for discussion. I know specifically looking at public works that we know that the roof is ready for that. But part of that process is having that work group go and put together a proposal, put together an RFP. So there's recommendations to council by the end of the year of what it would cost and some of the key details.
Last thing I had, and this is more of a comment, not a question, but one, I appreciate the education that you're doing on organics. I think as that rolls out, people are embracing it similar to probably when recycling rolled out. And at some point, it'll just become second nature to people. I still get confused about organics, I'll be honest with you, and have to look up the sheet and like, can I put that in there or not? But you know, my thought process is also about curbside cleanup, because I do see a lot of things that people are confused that this year is not a curbside cleanup year. But what are the other options, what are the other opportunities for people? And what is probably from the perspective of sustainability, the best way to get that out as opposed to just putting it out on your curb on a certain date and hoping people maybe come by and pick it up? And then it sits there for a while, there are organizations that may take it, there are places to take it to recycle. And so getting more of that information out, I think, would be helpful, because I think there is a little confusion in the community right now about what to do. And some people throwing out various concepts and ideas which may or may not work. And so I'd hope people would coordinate with you on those things to, to make sure this is as effective as possible.
Thank you.
Well said, Councilmember, thank you. Anything additional, council? Councilmember Lowman again?
Yeah, if I could, if you don't mind, I had a phone call actually this morning about that very topic. And you have to correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding was our bulky waste program kicks off, is it June 23rd? Is that, have I got the date right with that?
Ellen? Yeah, Ellen, are you online?
I saw it written somewhere.
Laura Horner.
We'll go with that, there, there and about. And that is, you'll be able to put out some, some items. And if you go to, if I get this right, I saw this this morning. It's, it's on the Bloomington website, but it's www.blm.mn/bolkeys. That will give you all the details of what that program looks like and what we're looking to change. So monthly, you'll be able to, to have your items picked up that fit within that scope and be able to get that stuff picked up. And then in addition to that, there'll be swaps that we saw that were on there. There'll be drop offs and that, that type of thing. And I always want to encourage folks to remember that with, with the cleanup piece, it would go directly down to, to trash down at the Burnsville site. So we really want to get in the idea of trying to recycle as much of that material as possible. And I do thank staff for that hard work that was done, and there is some confusion. So we probably do need to do something to communicate so people know what was going on, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think, bottom line, if you Google Bloomington and bulky, I bet you get, you get to where, you might get some other places, but I bet you get to where you need to get eventually. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have this information because Councilmember Mu and I did a town hall within the last couple of weeks. And my understanding is people are getting mailers that will describe the programs in detail and then also just some more information specifically about all of the garbage and recycling and organics programs in Bloomington. So those should be hitting mailboxes soon.
Thank you. Councilmember Dalisandro?
Thank you. Actually, I got mine, Councilmember Carter, and it was really nice, and they did a good job. And I think it was printed on, with soy ink, so it makes me very happy, so. You guessed it, great. So thank you for this. So one of the things that I think is alluded to in your plan is around working with other members of the, of the, the staff on, on initiatives that they're focused on. And I know we've talked a good bit about our utilities, just in general, especially the, you know, there's this, whether you look at water, and so you're going to have conservation, but the weird thing is, is that the more people use the water, the more we get paid for what, like, we have problems in those, they're juxtaposed against each other, right? Similarly, we have situations where people who would use composting, do composting or organics recycling, or would use recycling in general, are not doing it largely because of the fact that, you know, they're on their own to do that, and they may generate a bag a week, right, or whatever. I would just encourage you all, as you're thinking about that, and if you're doing any community engagement as it relates to those programs, that we think about that. I had one neighbor, for example, say to me, I'm on a cul-de-sac, if we could just get a station at the cul-de-sac level, we would all throw in there. Because, you know, but, but asking us each to have a cart is a bit too much, or whatever. I have neighbors who ask me all the time, like, why, as a senior citizen living by myself, do I have to, like, have this cart? Can't I share with my neighbor? You know, these are all really interesting questions. And I don't want the, I guess my point being that we, encouraging us to think very creatively. Commissions get to do that, staff doesn't necessarily always get to do that, but commissions get to, right? Think, think creatively about ideas you can bring to the table to help either community source these things or provide some relief for some of the folks that, you know, it's a little bit beyond their budget to pay for. You know, and, and if you can come up with some ideas, I think we're all willing to talk about them. We've been talking about them for a while, so I'd encourage that as part of what you're working on.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Council, if there's no further comments or questions, I would look for a motion to adopt the Sustainability Commission 2023 Work Plan.
So moved.
We've got a motion. Second by Councilmember, motion by Councilmember Dalisandro, second by Councilmember Lowman to adopt that Sustainability Commission work plan that will run from March of 2023 to February of 2024. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you so very much. I'll send our thanks to the rest of the Sustainability Commission and thank them for their work and encourage them to keep up the good work. We appreciate all that they do.
Thank you, and we appreciate your continued support for sustainability in Bloomington.
You're good, thank you. Item three on our agenda is our consent agenda. Councilmember Muah has the consent agenda this evening. Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. So far, I have a hold from Councilmember Nelson on 3.7. Any other holds, council? Okay, seeing none. I would move to approve the consent agenda, item 3.1 through 3.6, and then 3.8 through 3.15.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Lowman to accept tonight's consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Item 3.7. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to pull this one. It was the Artistry Appointment to Creative Placemaking. It's my understanding that through our city code, Artistry can appoint three members, which is what we're approving here. And I just want to confirm, given our previous conversations with regard to Artistry and sort of the separation there, that going forward, we're looking at cleaning that up, probably taking that out of code, and people that are involved in Artistry would certainly be welcome and encouraged to apply to be on this commission. But there would not be an appointment from Artistry. This is just sort of a, it hasn't got through the process part. I just want to confirm that, have that on the record or corrected.
Mr. Verugui?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, that is accurate. Staff is doing a code review right now, and we'll bring forward a subsequent council meeting, some amended code language regarding the Creative Placemaking Commission and how it's constituted.
Correct, thank you.
Councilmember Dalisandro, a question?
Just a quick clarification, if I could, please. We are approving, it looks, Ms. Rosenbusch, to be a three-year term. That won't, any code changes wouldn't impact that term, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Council, additional questions on this? Councilmember Nelson?
Not a question. I just want to make sure that the people that, that are on here, this is not a personal thing about them. It, it's an organizational thing with regards to our operational things with Artistry. It has nothing to do with the individuals. They're qualified, they, you know, they're, they're in a good position to help out on that commission. I have no doubt about that.
Thanks for that clarification, Councilmember. So Councilmember, if there is no further questions or comments on it, would you be willing to move item 3.7 on our consent agenda this evening?
Yeah, I'd move item 3.7.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nelson, second by Councilmember Lowman to adopt item 3.7 on our consent agenda. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to item four on our agenda tonight, it's our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. And if you were tuned in earlier, you saw that we did adjust our agenda a bit, and we moved item 4.3 to the top of this list. So we're going to go with item 4.3 first, then we'll go with item 4.1 and item 4.2. And I, I want to, just to clarify how we're, we're going to do all of this, just to make sure that everybody understands how we're going to do this. We're going to have a staff presentation. Mr. Markergard is here, he's going to give us a staff presentation. We're going to have, we're going to have the open, we're going to open the public hearing, and I hope you've all been signing up. I trust you've all been signing up, so we've got a nice list, and we can keep things orderly. Everybody who speaks, and I'll remind you of all this, everybody who speaks, according to our council rules of procedure, will be limited to five minutes. And we've got the shot clock on the wall to remind you of that five-minute limit. We're, we're not going to, you can ask questions, but we're not going to have a back and forth and answer questions. We'll jot questions down, and then at the end, once we close the public hearing, we'll turn to staff to answer the questions that have been asked about, if there are any specific questions. Staff will answer specific council questions, we'll have our discussion, and we will go from there. So that's how this is going to all make sense tonight. So we will start it off with our staff presentation, and we've got Mr. Markergard from our Planning Department here. Good evening, Mr. Markergard.
Good evening, Mayor Bussey, councilmembers. Nick Johnson and I will be tag teaming on the presentation tonight. I'll start it off and then hand it over. And this is what we're looking to cover tonight. We want to talk a little bit about the key project goals. I'll share a little bit of information on the proposed amendments. And then we'll talk about activities that have taken place since your last public hearing on January 9th. We've done a lot of analysis, there's been a lot of public engagement, a lot of correspondence that's been received, and we'll talk about that. And then finally, answering questions you might have with staff before the public hearing. We started this project about a year and a half ago and received a lot of good input from the Planning Commission, from the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, from the City Council, at various study sessions. Based on that input, we did a lot of outreach over the summer and then started drafting the ordinance last fall. We've had two public hearings to date, one before the Planning Commission in December, one before the City Council in January. And tonight will be the second City Council public hearing. So I'd like to highlight four key goals of the project. And first one I'll highlight is simply providing more housing options and new housing types in Bloomington. And what do we mean by new housing types? The photo on the screen is a good example. This is a smaller home in Bloomington. And there are many similar homes to this that were built in the 1940s and 1950s. But additional housing like this is not allowed in Bloomington today, and has not been allowed in Bloomington for several decades. It's actually prohibited by the zoning ordinance. So why is this type of housing prohibited? This house is not big enough to meet Bloomington's zoning standards. Bloomington requires at least 1,040 square feet. This particular house is 816 square feet. Secondly, the garage is not big enough. Bloomington requires two garage stalls to build a new home in Bloomington. This has one garage stall. Third, the lot is not big enough. You cannot create a new lot in Bloomington unless it's 11,000 square feet, which is a little bit over a quarter of an acre. This lot is smaller, it's 10,076 square feet. And finally, this lot is not wide enough. Bloomington does not allow new lots that are narrower than 80 feet in width. This lot happens to be 75 feet in width. So this is an example of housing that you cannot build in Bloomington today under the zoning ordinance. But we feel there are many advantages to housing similar to this. This type of housing is relatively affordable, it's relatively sustainable. It's a really good fit for a lot of households, smaller households, singles, ideal for seniors. And then it really provides a good opportunity to build generational wealth in Bloomington. So the ordinance before you tonight would again open the door to this type of housing in Bloomington, just like it was allowed many decades ago. Second key goal I want to highlight is increasing affordable homeownership opportunities. This lot, highlighted in red, 9030 Park Avenue South, it's a vacant lot, and it's owned by the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And the HRA has a memorandum of understanding with the West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust, and the land trust would like to subdivide the property. They would like to create two single-family homes, one of which would have an accessory dwelling unit or an ADU. And that lot would be reserved for a multi-generational household. But again, this is not allowed under current zoning. The current zoning in this case, even though it's a very large lot, 120 feet wide, well over 15,000 square feet, would not allow subdivision today. So this is an example of just one lot, but it shows how the ordinance will have an immediate impact on homeownership, affordable homeownership opportunities in Bloomington if it's passed. A third key goal is to address the homeownership opportunity gap. This is a key goal of the project, but it's also a goal of the city's strategic plan, Bloomington Tomorrow Together. And that plan states, "City of Bloomington will achieve significant improvement in indices measuring equitable economic growth." And it goes on to state, "The city acknowledges and addresses issues of injustice for historically marginalized communities in Bloomington." And this is an illustration of the homeownership gap in Bloomington. This is 2020 data, and it compares the percentage of households in different groups that own versus rent. For example, for households white alone, not Hispanic or Latino, 75% of households in that group own, 25% rent. For Hispanic or Latino origin, 42% own, 58% rent. And then for Black or African-American households, 20% own, 80% rent. So why does this ownership gap exist? It's really a reflection of disparities in income, in unemployment levels, in generational wealth, and several other factors. For example, if we look at the most recent census data, white households in Bloomington had a median income of $84,828, whereas Black households had a median income of $63,025. And then if we look at unemployment rates, white households, 3.5%, Black unemployment rates were 10.7%. And then how does that compare nationally or statewide? This graphic compares that ownership gap, so in this case, we're looking at the gap between non-Hispanic white households and households of color nationwide. That's the bottom line. That gap is 26.2% statewide, 30.9%, but in Bloomington, 32.6%. So that gap is larger in Bloomington than either Minnesota or nationwide. So staff believes that allowing opportunities for more affordable lots, for more affordable housing types, is an important step that Bloomington can take to address the homeownership opportunity gap. Fourth project goal I'd like to highlight is providing opportunities for infill housing. We've all seen a lot of headlines over the years on the state of housing. We know that demand for housing is very, very high, supplies are very, very low. That means that prices go up rapidly. You'll notice one of these headlines from the Star Tribune talks about the Twin Cities having the worst housing shortage in the nation. We had a staff member discussing this ordinance within the last couple of weeks with Coldwell Banker Realtors, and at the date of that meeting, they relayed to him that there were a total of 10 active listings in Bloomington. That's single-family, two-family, condo, townhome, any ownership opportunities. On that particular day, there were 10 home or ownership opportunities, which is a very, very small number for a city the size of Bloomington. So market demands are one thing, but in addition to meeting those demands, allowing infill housing has a lot of other very positive benefits. It strengthens the school system, it helps build the tax base, and then it helps to support commercial services that the entire community and existing residents use and desire. So Bloomington has been very successful in recent years in adding multifamily units. We have not been successful in adding single-family or ownership opportunities. In this particular table, we're looking at new units since 2020. For multifamily, we've added over 1,600 units that have actually opened since 2020. We have another 2,000 units in the pipeline. That means they're under construction or they're at some point in the approvals process. But if we contrast that with single-family and two-family, since 2020, we've had zero net units. We have issued 13 building permits for new single-family homes, but we've also issued 13 demo permits for single-family homes. So there hasn't been, and that's really the story, at least since 2000. We've had one larger subdivision, a greenfield subdivision, hidden bluffs, but everything else has kind of been tear down, add back. So I would note that there have been multiple past ordinance amendments that have helped to move the needle on the multifamily housing, and the ordinance before you tonight is one way that you can move that needle on single-family and two-family housing. In terms of the proposed amendments, I don't want to go into a lot of detail since we talked about them in detail at the last public hearing, and we do have a lot of information in the packet, but I do want to highlight what the changes are, and then I'm happy to go into a lot more detail if you would like staff to on any of these items. But basically, the proposed amendments decrease required lot sizes, they decrease required lot widths, they decrease minimum required unit sizes, they decrease the amount of off-street parking that's required, they decrease garage requirements, decrease setbacks along the street, they increase the maximum allowed impervious surface limits, and then they modify approvals processes to, approval processes to lower fees and to lower the time involved for the approvals. So in all cases, the minimum standards are being reduced or the maximums are being increased. So less regulation, and this really frees the market and our affordable housing providers to more directly address housing demands in the community. So at this point, I'll transition to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Markergard. Mr. Johnson, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, so one of the things that came out of this process has actually been a little bit of a nagging issue for the last few years, and it's mostly in relation to accessory dwelling units and two-family dwellings. But if the city wants to pursue opportunities for housing in low-density areas, two-family dwellings and ADUs were seen as a viable way to provide some of those opportunities. However, as we realized, as we were looking at more of our two-family sites, some of those sites, if you established a two-family dwelling, even though they met our zoning requirements, actually exceeded the maximum five units per acre of our low-density residential district. And so this is something that's been a little bit in the background for the last few years, but it really comes to a head with this project, and the reason for that is that the minimum lot size that this ordinance proposes, 7,800 square feet, it's 0.18 acres of land. If you establish a single-family dwelling on a lot of that size, it actually exceeds five units per dwelling. So the minimum lot size as proposed under this ordinance would go beyond what our current low-density residential range offers. So that's really what is kind of driving this process. I should note that this does not revise or amend any of the underlying density ranges associated with all your zoning districts, so certainly you have multifamily zoning districts, and you have other districts that establish kind of development intensity. What this really is providing is high-level guidance for your future land use map in your comprehensive plan. So here is the existing density ranges, and here is the proposed density ranges. Kind of recognizing the changes that are being proposed here, one thing I want to emphasize that as a fully-built-out community, staff is not anticipating that low-density residential areas are going to rise to 12 units an acre in kind of a gross setting or factor. One of the difficulties we have, and this is kind of getting into the regulatory weeds, we actually have to evaluate sites, their density for compliance with our comp plan on a site-by-site basis, not neighborhood scale, not block scale, not even beyond that. So whereas a project might increase the density of a block from, say, 2.2 to 2.5 units per acre, that actual individual site is up at 10 units an acre or something along those lines. So I get that that's kind of jarring for folks sometimes. I have a slide that shows kind of the math behind some of it and why we're proposing the ranges that we are, if we want to go into that. But yeah. So one thing that we provided to you, I believe, as part of some of our study sessions, is we did look at some of our peer communities in terms of what they're doing from a zoning perspective in their low-density residential areas, single and two-family most specifically. And one thing I want to emphasize is that this is a process that is occurring in a few other cities around the metro, most notably recently, Roseville and Richfield have gone through similar processes, kind of reevaluating their low-density residential areas. This is a process that I anticipate other fully-built-out communities right in the core around the metro, around the core cities will also look at because they're facing the same housing supply issues and the same affordability issues that Bloomington is. It's not unique to Bloomington. So they're facing very much of the same landscape. But that being said, we wanted to circle back and provide you some of these numbers. These types of analyses can be a little bit nuanced or difficult because all the other communities have typically have several single and two-family zoning districts. They also utilize plan development tools or other tools of flexibility that really make it kind of fuzzy or not just a very clear picture, city to city to city. But that being said, we still want to provide council and the public kind of a visual snapshot of kind of what we're looking at here, both from the single-family lot size and a lot width. And we provide it to you in two ways. We provide it to you kind of what their lowest standard would be, the district that supports their lowest standard, as well as their most widely-applied zoning district. And sometimes that can be kind of a close call, there's sometimes there's other zoning districts that are close to the most widely-applied and have a lower standard, but we still want to provide you both to communicate the information in both ways. So that's the lot size. This shows you the lot width. So certainly, our existing standards are more on the right side of the bell, proposed more over on the left side of the curve on the lower with the reductions. Two-family dwellings tells somewhat of a similar story. Right now, our current standards arm over, or over on the higher end. We would propose to reduce that more to the middle or more to the lower end. I would say that Bloomington is a bit unique in that not all cities allow two-family dwellings in their single-family zoning districts. More cities are adapting that approach, certainly as we're talking about the conditions we talked about in the project goal section of the presentation. But just to note that as well, I just want to be fair and open with, transparent with all the information. So getting to the candidate analysis, this has been a conversation with residents, as well as I know, something that was discussed at the last council meeting as well. In the previous staff report, staff estimated or projected that you, there would be a potential to see between 100 and 200 net new dwelling units over a 10-year period as a result of some of these changes within the ordinance. Doing a model or projection of infill development in a fully-built-out community is a really difficult thing to do, not only because you have to look at all of these nuanced regulations kind of on a 20,000-plus lot palette of opportunities, if we're going to call it that, but that also doesn't take into any consideration all the economic factors that go into whether or not a lot may or may not be redeveloped. It also doesn't go into any of the physical characteristics of the lot that might make it a easily-built lot or a very difficult lot based on the physical characteristics. So while we provided you some numbers about the number of lots that meet certain of this dimensional criteria kind of in previous sessions, we wanted to map it and give people more of a visual of kind of where some of these lots are located. So the way that we do that is we double the minimum lot size, whether it be the existing minimum lot size or the proposed minimum lot size, and then we also add in a lot frontage criteria. Now, there's several disclaimers about this data without getting too far into the weeds, but one is we can't extract the higher standard for corner lots. So that's one area that this data is flawed. Another area is that in the existing regulations, we can't account for median lot width because that actually is a site-by-site analysis of all lots within a certain distance of a property. So that's not informed in the existing lot width. As I said, we don't model the physical characteristics of a lot as part of this analysis, and there's one other one, but I forget what it was, so we'll move on. There's, in other words, I say all that, not that people are interested in the methodology of this so much, I say it as a means to say that what you're going to see on the subsequent slides has, the data has problems. It's not precise. What you see in candidates, what we're calling candidates or opportunities, ultimately does not reflect an accurate depiction or portrayal of what is going to happen from a development potential perspective. And the reason for that is that a lot of these properties all have existing values. Their structures have values, their lots have values, and those values exceed what the acquisition price would be to have a project that had good return on investment for a development opportunity. So these community snapshots are helpful in that they give us some idea where these potential lots are located, but from my perspective, they're not prescriptive in that this is where redevelopment will occur in Bloomington should the ordinance pass. So the, oh, I remember what the other factor was, was lot width. So one of, again, this is getting a little bit geeky about GIS, but we have data about lot frontage, which is the width of a lot at the actual street. That's not how we measure site width. We measure site width at the front setback. So unless a lot is perfectly rectangular, that lot width, that lot frontage data is going to be flawed because you have some lots that are triangular like this, some lots that are triangular like that, even a lot that could show up on this if it's not a perfectly rectangular lot. It might show up as a candidate on this. We actually do a site analysis, and it proves that, you know, you don't have the right site width, so you can't do this, sorry. Anyway, so the way that we filter these lots is we double the minimum lot and width requirements of both the existing ordinance and in this case, the proposed ordinance. So that gets you to what we're calling candidate lots. Basically, these are lots that could have the potential for some type of development. Now, we modeled both single-family subdivision as well as two-family dwelling candidate sites. So a point I'll make about single-family subdivision, Glenn talked a little bit, a lot about the project goals about creating opportunity. So what this ordinance has the potential to do, and again, this is candidate lots only, but what it has the potential to do is increase the candidate lots by a factor of nine, potentially. So again, site-by-site analysis would actually bear the fruit of the truth of that high-level kind of statement, but that is what the factor of opportunity presents itself. Get into the two-family analysis, you know, this is, we always kind of learn new things about doing more community engagement. One of the things I learned in this process is that not many folks know that two-family dwellings are permitted use in our single-family zoning district. There's a lot of properties in Bloomington that already likely meet the criteria to be a two-family dwelling. Now, we do have some spacing requirements, and there's approval procedures that are included in this ordinance that inform some of that, but the fact is, is that Bloomington was mostly developed with single-family dwellings. And again, those structures and those lots have a lot of value in their existing use. So what this analysis led us to is that there's 5,100 candidates of existing two-family dwelling sites in Bloomington. Today, there's around, there's just under 940 two-family dwellings in Bloomington, 70% of which are owner-occupied, actually. So we did this analysis for our existing rules, and we did this for our proposed rules. So this was a little under of a doubling of the factor of opportunity. I'm going to keep using that word. So that gives you a visual picture. That's really the value that this does. But what I want to emphasize with folks is that whenever we get a phone call about with X address, we have to go by, through a detailed site analysis on many different factors, not just lot width and area. just lot width and area, about meeting all the different criteria. So this really is just about, it's a candidacy snapshot is what it is. So because we recognize there are a lot of flaws in this data, we had to kind of zoom down in and look at the neighborhood scale level of what these different, or what really is possible. And so what we did is we mapped three neighborhoods, kind of located in different parts of the community at random, and with the exception of Norman Ridge, who expressed interest in this topic. And what we did is we mapped what sites could potentially be subdivided under our existing regulations and what sites could potentially be subdivided under proposed regulations. With the Norman Ridge analysis, we did do some high-level analysis of median lot width. The other two neighborhoods, that wasn't relevant because none of the lots met the size requirements under our existing rules, so median was not a factor. But, so what this is really capturing is again, a snapshot of opportunity. But what I will say, oh, yeah, so the yellow lots are lots that could be potentially subdivided today, or in the case of two-family candidates today, the green lots is what would result if the ordinance were to be passed. So what this doesn't factor in is any factor of economics. And so what we did is we tried to take, we tried to model two different maximum lot values of, in order to introduce an economic factor, to make it more realistic for potentially infill development of some kind. Because unless a house is perfectly situated on one side of the lot with the whole other side of the lot completely available for development, you're not going to have someone knocking down a highly valuable structure in order to build two smaller dwellings. It's just not typically what happens. So what we did is we introduced an economic factor. So we modeled it at two different costs. By higher cost on the title of the slide, what I'm insinuating here is that the market is willing or able to bear a higher market value cost. On the next slide, we model that the market is only willing to pay a lower market value cost. So where do we get those costs? We get them from our assessing department, who tracks all single-family home sales related to teardowns and new builds plus other acquisitions. So we got data from that. We also got data from HRA, who have acquired several lots over the years in different, mostly on the east and central Bloomington, but they have some ideas about lot values in that respect. So that's where we got the data from. So what you're going to see as you model, at first, just a higher lot cost, if you go from the first slide to the second slide, you'll see that the number of opportunities is already reduced by some factor. If the market is willing to not even meet that higher lot cost, you transfer on to meeting a lower lot cost and the amount of opportunity has reduced significantly. So I just say that as a way, hopefully as a means, and I know these are kind of small slides, a little bit hard to see the number of lots, but you can see in the case of the middle neighborhood there, the opportunities has shrunk to two. In the far-right side of the slide, shrunk into one. On the central part of the slide, it's only actually two vacant lots that remain that met that lower lot cost. And I would say that this is maybe obvious, but the lot cost between the three neighborhoods are not all the same. They're all arranged to meet what our assessing division and based on this data think is an accurate portrayal of the value of a new lot. So hopefully that makes sense. Two-family dwellings. So again, this very much matches the citywide snapshot that we did. A lot of properties in Bloomington are candidates to be two-family dwellings currently, you know, meeting our minimum standards. In the case of all three of these snapshot areas, there's no two-family dwellings currently located in these areas. So expanding the opportunity for two-family dwellings, probably in some areas that have existing a little bit lower lot sizes, these areas were selected for the reason that they had larger lots in order to be, to make themselves worthwhile candidates to study for single-family subdivision reasons. But yeah, my takeaways from this is economic factors drive a lot and then the two-family dwellings, there's actually a lot of opportunities today. So there was a lot of discussion and questions that we got about the public that, okay, we're proposing to subdivide lots or do more infill development or establish nor two-family dwellings, this could be very disruptive in a number of ways. And one of the things that the previous discussion did not delve deeply into is kind of the site plan review process, for lack of a better term. There is a lot of, and on these particular city code sections on the screen before you, this is more related to private lots, subject to private development. I'll talk about public efforts around natural resource management as well. What I want to first focus on is that if someone wants to do development in Bloomington, they're subject to all these standards that they have to meet. They have to submit a tree preservation plan if they're doing a subdivision. They are subject to steep slope ordinance, which means if they're on a steep lot, they get less impervious surface, so less development impact. They do have to provide stormwater management. All these homes that were built in the 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s didn't have to do any stormwater management. You call down to the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District now and you got to write a, you got to build a bunch of stuff that takes care of stormwater management. So it's a very different landscape regulatorily speaking than some years ago. Hopefully, I'm not going too long on this stuff. But the point is, is that the site plan review process is more rigorous than I think people expected or anticipated to be. This is more stuff subject to the private. Okay, so what is City of Bloomington doing to kind of protect or restore natural resources in public lands? We do have multiple plans that do speak to this. Dave Hansen, the Natural Resource Manager, is here tonight. If you want to ask specific questions about what the city can do to protect natural resources, he's here, can certainly provide better testimony in that regard than I can. But the reason we bring these up is that these are focused on public lands, these efforts, city parks, and then the Minnesota River. Some of the discussion that came to our attention, most specifically to Norman Ridge, but from other residents as well, is again, concern about development impacts to natural or sensitive areas of Bloomington. This idea of the, or not the idea, the establishment of this DNR habitat corridor came to our attention. And this was created in the mid-2000s by the DNR as a high-level planning document. We tried to contact DNR staff to learn more about it in terms of kind of what their original intent were. Unfortunately, not many staff who were involved in the initial effort of the process are there today to give us more of that background information. But as you can see, it's a very wide swath of area in Bloomington. It does cover Civic Plaza is included in that area, area of South Loop is included in that, Normandale Office Park is included in that. But all of this information, what it tells us, particularly with in relation to other environmental overlay districts that we review, is that its really intent was more as a high-level planning document. And the reason that you do an effort like this is that you want other jurisdictions, particularly in these areas, the DNR deals with statewide and metro-wide efforts, is they want to identify areas for prioritization as well as funding opportunities to do more natural resource protection and restoration. And so that's certainly what the City of Bloomington latched on to. This actually document comes from the city's natural resource prioritization plan around city parks. And what, if city parks were located within that corridor, they received a higher score for priority sake. The Nine Mile Creek Watershed District utilized this corridor in the same, the same specific way. On the left side of the slide, you can see that this is a snapshot from the Metro Greenways, the DNR effort more in the mid-2000s. So you can see there's a lot of these habitat corridors. So all this being said, is that we know there's been some discussion around the creation of some environmental overlay districts. What staff, what planning staff, and we can certainly talk to other staff too, but what we would suggest to you about that is that when you do impose an overlay district that's about environmental protection, we suggest that you do so in a way that's very narrow, it's specifically tailored and defined to a specific resource, and it's very easily and precisely described on the land. So the bluff protection overlay for the Minnesota River follows a contour, for example, or a steep-sloped area of Nine Mile Creek south of 106th Street. So that's not to say that you can't create an environmental overlay that may or may not relate to these habitat corridors, but what staff would tell you is that the way that it's drawn in the DNR documents, just from a planning perspective, is, from a regulatory tool perspective, is not precise enough for what we typically see for this type of tool. So I wanted to provide that information. So there's many new things with this ordinance. One of the new things is that we brought it through the Health and Sustainability Committee as its pilot review. So this is something that's been on work plans that you've seen. Health and All Policies was the previous name. It's taken on the Health and Sustainability Committee review. So this was the first, it was the pilot. So certainly, there's more refinements to be made with that process, given it was the very first one. But I think it was very helpful in that it looks at a policy such as this from a very different lens from what just traditional planning or traditional civil engineering or other respects that we typically would run these types of policies through. So fairly interesting. In terms of, I think if you read the report, what it really solicits to me is that there's really two different ways to look at it, more on the macro level and then on the micro level. On the macro level, just from a development perspective, in the sustainability world today, the sustainability world, and this can be surprising to some folks, it really does want to emphasize increasing levels of density in the inner parts of metro areas. They want to stop urban sprawl, basically. And obviously, that goes beyond Bloomington's jurisdiction to manage that, but just from that macro perspective, something to think about. Getting down to the micro perspective, there's a lot of benefits in individual aspects of the ordinance from a sustainability perspective, allowing smaller homes, is a small, lower energy use, lower building materials, lower solid waste, a lot of those types of things. So that's all noted in the report. The report does note that it doesn't just kind of wipe away the potential for impacts to natural resources, that is a factor. But then, with respect to that, they do get back to that macro analysis of kind of what are the alternatives. And yeah, and Emma Stross is here too, as you know. So if there's questions about that, she was one of the key players in that. Let's see here, I froze. Oh, sorry. So public outreach and engagement. So on the left side of the slide, we presented this to you before, kind of some of the efforts we made in advance of January 9th. I'm only going to speak about what's happened since January 9th. Since then, we've had a couple neighborhood meetings with Norman Ridge residents. We had, you know, and this kind of blew me away how much engagement happened on Let's Talk Bloomington, but it actually turned out to be a really effective tool at a certain point in the process. If you saw that engagement report, it kind of skyrocketed at a certain point. And so that became very helpful to have that question and answer tool and the comment tool. So we're appreciative of co-ed staff who helped us with that. The city did blast its social media accounts, Nextdoor, Facebook, Twitter, about the project in order to get more discussion and information out there in the, out there to the residents. We did get a number, or a few, I should say, informational meeting requests. The HR, the Human Rights Commission asked staff to present. Glenn mentioned the Caldwell Bankers Group that we discussed it at, and Oak Grove Presbyterian Church has a housing committee, and they asked us to come present about it. So those are a few of those meetings. And then, just in terms of miscellaneous engagement, we've had well over 20 phone calls and 35 emails. Those are approximations. So in terms of the public correspondence, we've received 59 total emails on the Let's Talk Bloomington. And I should back up, the email responses that we've received thus far have largely been in opposition to the ordinance. I don't want to wash over that or ignore that fact. On the Let's Talk Bloomington engagement tools, we got seven comments, we had 13 questions with staff responses back and forth. We did get a letter, a specific letter request from an attorney representing the Norman Ridge Coalition of Neighbors, I think is how it was phrased. So certainly, we can talk about that. There were some requests around median lot width and environmental overlay requests. And then we got a letter of support from the Realtors Association.
And then transitioning into recommendations tonight, we have heard from various advisory bodies for the city. Planning Commission, as I mentioned, did hold a public hearing on this and unanimously recommend approval of the ordinance, 70 vote. Housing and Redevelopment Authority has also submitted a memo of support, very specifically talking about 9030 Park Avenue. And then the Human Rights Commission has also issued a letter of support for the ordinance. So we have three recommendations for you tonight. Staff also strongly recommends adoption of the ordinance, and we're happy to take questions.
Thank you. Thanks for that thorough presentation, very thorough. Lot of information there, a lot to digest, I appreciate it. Counsel, questions of staff on this? And to be clear here, this is questions of clarification. We're not into discussing the merits, yes or no on this, but if you need questions of clarification, this would be the appropriate time, I think, to ask staff that. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So on the slide where you looked at the specific neighborhoods and you looked at the two-family neighborhood, or the two-family changes, so I think it would be this one. Yes, so this is current state. This is like the lots that currently are available for two-family. Okay. And how long have we had, how long have we allowed two-family homes in the R1?
Mayor Bosie, Councilmember Carter, that goes back a long, long time, many decades.
So we've had that in place for decades and we haven't seen any two-family homes built in the?
In these particular, in these three neighborhoods, we have seen, you know, citywide, some two-family homes built, but had not in these three neighborhoods.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
And just to clarify too, the yellow, the lots outlined in yellow are allowed under today's code and then the lots outlined in green would be added with amendments.
So we could do nothing and this, we still have all these lots in Bloomington that can, people can build two-family homes? Yeah, okay.
If I may, Mayor, if I may add one piece of context to that, is that rarely, it doesn't happen often, but sometimes we get a call from a resident who's interested, or a property owner's interested in renovating a single-family home and do a two-family dwelling. And in addition to cost, one of the performance standards that makes that difficult is that we have a 50-foot front yard setback for two-family dwellings currently, and most of our single-family dwellings don't meet that requirement. So it kind of eliminates those sites out of the gate. So just as a perspective.
Okay. And then you mentioned having a slide on that showed the data for why you're proposing the ranges that you're proposing. Do you mind just briefly highlighting that?
Absolutely not.
Thank you.
Here we go. There we go. Mayor, Councilmember Carter, so again, a minimum-sized lot under the proposal would be 7,800 square feet, that's 0.18 acres in size. As I mentioned kind of previously, the images on the slide kind of provide a visual explanation of what I was talking about, how on a site-by-site basis, we still have to review development according to consistency with the comprehensive plan. And so the reason that the cap of 12 was proposed by staff is that if you had a minimum-size single-family lot, if you still wanted to allow some even modest ADU, say 350 square feet, you've now got two units on a lot that's 0.18 acres in size. And so that density calculation under that, that narrow or specific circumstance gets you up to 11.1 units per acre. Yep.
Anything further, Councilmember?
I'm not ready.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Carter, for coming back to this because this was where my area of questioning was as well. So the comprehensive plan text amendment, talk a little bit about what was, prior to your work on this, what was already in place there? How long has it been in place and where did it come from?
Do you want me to take a stab at that or do you want?
Sure, I can. Mayor Bosie, Councilmember DeLisandro, so the origins of these three designations, low-density, medium-density, high-density, kind of flow out of the 1980 comprehensive plan. That was the first comprehensive plan that the city prepared. And they have had the same density ranges since 1980, that zero to five, five to 10, and then 10 and above units per acre. As Mr. Johnson stated, the reason for the amendments is that it closely matches the densities that are proposed with the ADUs in the ordinance. I would note that there is an exception in the current comprehensive plan in low-density residential that allows two-family homes to be above that density range as long as it's consistent with the zoning ordinance. So that is one exception that's in place today. You could argue that that extends to accessory dwelling units, but since it's not crystal clear, we wanted to clarify.
And just as a follow-up to your comment there, so the plan, the plan text amendment does allow for two-families, but you would, would you say that our zoning, our current zoning, not the proposed ones for two-family, but the current ones are at odds with that today?
Mayor Bosie, Councilmember DeLisandro, because of that exception, to Mayor Bussie, Councilmember DeLisandro, because of that exception, today you can have two-family homes within the low-density residential designation. With a home plus an ADU, it's less clear, so we wanted to clarify that.
And clarifying it by adding the accessory dwelling unit portion to that exception? Is that what you mean?
Mayor Bussie, Councilmember DeLisandro, yeah, and specifically changing the density range to encompass the entire breadth of what could be allowed.
Okay, so, in other words, instead of making an exception, make it the rule?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Sorry, Mayor, I can add a little too, I was more involved in writing this language, so maybe I should have asked that question. But, the previous 2018 comp plan also included reference to cluster development in low-density areas, that allowance exists today in our comp plan. And so, what we were proposing to do is replace this term with terms that are more consistent with the terminologies that we have been using in our regulatory framework today. I did get a question from a resident, okay, why identify that townhomes are allowed, low-density towns are allowed in the LDR district, and happy to report to them that we currently have townhomes, areas, low-density ones, but in, that exist in Bloomington today that are guided LDR. So by being more explicit about it and being more clear about the terminologies, I think it was just an intent to be consistent and be more transparent about what's happening in those LDR areas that's already happening.
Counsel, anything additional, or can we get to the public hearing? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. You know, we did, you opened the door to go through the letter that was sent through, and if you don't mind, I'd like to go through some of those, because I'm just, I'm curious about what staff thinks about some of those proposals that were given. Certainly, you know, the tail end of that, I think I understood the position of staff with regards to creating a new sustainable district that would overlay either this part or other parts of the city. I do have a question about that, and I think I understood the staff to say that they wouldn't be in favor of what they're proposing here, but I just kind of assumed that based on what you said. But I guess the question I would ask, is do you see anything within this particular area that would warrant, you know, creating a separate and distinct zone for that purpose?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, we certainly could get Dave Hanson up here too. He's more knowledgeable about the city's natural resources than I am, but what I would say, certainly there are areas of ecological value in these areas, that's without question. I guess what our, where our review standpoint comes from is that the effort to create the bluff protection overlay district was a many-year process that involved a lot of study and precise evaluation in order to create that. We don't see this map, and I'm not suggesting that, I don't want to speak for the neighborhood, the neighborhood can speak for themselves, but using this map to create that overlay would not be consistent from what we have seen for environmental protection overlays. And it is a rezoning process, so it's not as if you could create something narrowly in ordinance that maybe could potentially have heightened environmental regulation, but in reality, to be transparent, these types of tools typically aren't an overlay district that get applied, which involves its own separate public hearing process. So, Dave, sorry.
Thank you, Nick.
I'm very talkative tonight, I apologize.
Dave Hanson, good evening.
Yes, Mayor Bussie and Councilmember Lohman, I will take a stab to fill in any gaps on that. One of the things that we did in response to the inquiries of the last in January, was we looked at the history of these corridors. They're used by many, many agencies, from watershed districts to the DNR, to the Legislative Citizens Commission on Natural Resources, to evaluate projects, to evaluate priorities for natural resources restoration. That is exactly how we used this corridor. It was one of the attributes we used for the prioritization plan. As we dug into it, well, we just looked at this map and realized that it's a general outline. The important part is the connectivity, and it's obvious that the creek is that connectivity, and this map tends to cut across neighborhoods, it cuts across industrial areas, so it's very general and not very specific. We looked at the same data that was used to create a map for Hennepin County, that seems to be much more precise, in that it really is defined more closely and follows essentially public property, the waterway, the wetlands, in a more specific fashion.
I'm not sure that I'm clear that I completely follow that in terms of, so are you saying that, you know, in terms of what they're asking for, is that something that's doable, or no, we need more time to study that to make an appropriate conclusion?
Yeah, Mayor Bussie, Councilmember Lohman, sorry if I didn't, I missed my point there. It could be done, but back to what Nick and Glenn said, we need to find a specific place to put that. So for instance, the bluff protection follows a contour elevation, so we need to define that more specifically than is defined in this map. And we don't know exactly what that is yet, but we can certainly take a look.
It would take more time. So we're not there tonight, we couldn't ascertain that, I mean, that's something that we'd have to kind of put off on, okay, that's fair enough.
Councilmember, let's stick with the questions, let's not get into problem solving quite yet.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm just trying to understand, not trying to problem solve, just trying to understand if we could use that tonight. If we could skip towards the front of this here, it sounded like one of the recommendations that they had put forward is to take this designated area and to, you know, basically use a 50% as opposed to an 80%, and it sounded like they wanted to create a different zoning code, if I understood, or a different zoning district for this. And so I wanted to understand the impact of that implication, and also what staff thought about that particular proposal that was put forward by the group.
Sure. Mayor Bussie, Councilmember Lohman, we prepared this map today, which is a little bit of a variation on the map in the packet, and the main difference is it eliminates 120-foot-wide lots, and then looks at lots 121 feet or greater in width, and then over 50,600 square feet in size. And the reason that's important is with the neighborhoods' proposed 50% median lot width requirement, it would start to have an impact in neighborhoods where you have several lots that are above 120 feet in width. So we have some neighborhoods that have a lot of 120-foot-wide lots, in those particular neighborhoods, keeping that 50% median lot width standard would have no impact, but in other neighborhoods, it would have an impact. And, so in this map, the areas in green, we're trying to quantify, okay, where are the areas that would be impacted by retaining that 50% median lot width? And if there are just a few isolated lots within the area, that would not impact the median, but in those areas where you see a lot of, in this case, green lots clustered together, in those areas, that proposed change would have an impact, or the potential of impact in reducing opportunities.
Thank you for clarifying that. I'm trying to think if there's anything else here that they've put forward here. I think that's it. I didn't see anything else here, trying to see if there's anything I missed here with the parcel piece here. All right, I think that's, I do have other questions, but I think I can wait.
Very good. Counsel, any additional questions of staff? Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. One question, whatever happens tonight, regardless of that, can we still do an overlay on whatever decision happens today? So, we choose to do it or not, can we then come back in the future and do something else on top of that? It doesn't limit us to what we can do?
Yeah, Mayor Bussie, Councilmember Moore, that's correct. You could add it to a work plan, you know, make the Planning Commission work plan, a future work plan, and have something like that studied, if that's the council's desire.
With that, Counsel, I think it is time to open the public hearing on this issue. And I will open the public hearing item 4.3. This is a city code amendment, a single and two-family residential standards and comprehensive plan text amendments. Now, you all signed up, or at least I hope you folks signed up, we reserved three seats right up front here, and so we're going to kind of do speaker, on deck, in the hall, and still on the bench, or I'm not exactly sure, I can't go three or four deep in terms of batting order here. But the first four people I see on the list here are Kim, and Kim, I'm going to pronounce your name wrong, because I did for years, Kim V, exactly, that's what I knew, Rochelle Gibbs, Mara Lindogowski, and Dan Curry. So if Kim V could come up, and if the rest of you could kind of queue up and get ready. As I said, we do have a five-minute limit, and we'll, we're going to hold you to it, because we want to make sure that everybody gets the same amount of time and we get out of here before midnight. And I'll have everybody, I hope, recognize and appreciate the number of people wearing ties up here tonight. I mean, actually, we took a group photo before the council meeting, that's why it's, typically, this group is not this well-dressed, typically, so.
Oh, I thought it was for the crowd.
Or, yes.
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes.
Just one thing too, I know that you've reminded folks in the past that, just as a decorum, we normally have the speaker address you as the mayor.
That's correct, yep. Just, and a couple other things, the speaker addresses, will address the mayor, and we'll ask questions of the mayor, and as I said, we'll answer the questions after we collect all the questions and answers. And again, for, just for the decorum of a council chambers, we don't encourage, we discourage strongly, if somebody makes a point that you agree with, not approvingly and smile, but we don't like a round of applause, because we don't want to intimidate people who might have an alternate opinion that you might have, and influence their discussion and their statements as well. So, everybody clear on everything? Kim V, good evening and welcome. Officially, as you're speaking, if you could, identify yourself for the record, and off we'll go.
Excellent, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Kim Vlissalovich, I live at 329 Norman Ridge Drive. Been a resident of Bloomington for 13 years, and I want to thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to speak this evening on a very important topic that impacts our neighborhood. I can stand here all night, or just my allot, five minutes, talking about the unique character, environmental landscape, and the diverse demographic that makes up Norman Ridge Drive. However, tonight, I'm going to speak through the lens of a former council member and policymaker, and I think I can get it in under five minutes for us tonight. For the benefit of the folks in the room here and watching, I had the privilege to serve this community from 2016 to 2018 alongside Mayor Bussie, then councilmember, councilmember Lohman, and city staff with Mr. Fabrugie, nice to see you. This is when I first became aware there was a strategic planning process. I understand the complexities of balancing long-range planning to accommodate a more dense and diverse city, although there's opportunity for more collaboration on how we go about implementing these changes. Creation of affordable housing and diversifying existing housing are important goals. Rejuvenating distressed properties provides new opportunities for families to live, work, and grow in our city. I think Norman Ridge demonstrates the spirit of our city and long-range strategic plan. For example, we have cultural diversity, multi-generational families, new families, elderly couples, living on Norman Ridge Drive today. Some people have remodeled, built on, or even tore down and rebuilt their homes to stay in this neighborhood. All of this development happened organically, contributing to the Bloomington tax base with individual investment. Now, I know this seems like Nirvana, kind of sitting up here and explaining it, but this is life on the ridge, as we affectionately call it in our neighborhood. It's easy for a policymaker to minimize adverse impacts to a neighborhood you do not reside in, or know outside of potentially a zoning map. I can also appreciate, we need to plan for density, and there is plenty of funding to support these initiatives. There are some other neighborhoods with different zoning that are more reflective of Norman Ridge Drive. One consideration, which I think is the best of both worlds, which we heard, which is even a better way to identify a new zoning district, that can both preserve the space that exists and allow for larger lots for organic expansion. Perhaps we could research another city that has developed this newly-created ordinance for precedence. Mayor, Counsel, I respectfully request a motion and an approval that accomplishes both the goals of the city and the neighborhood, which is equitable distribution of density throughout the city of Bloomington, while preserving the characteristics of the neighborhood with existing natural areas. Norman Ridge, Norman Ridge characteristics of the neighborhood with, pardon me, Norman Ridge is a neighborhood characterized by open space, wetlands, and significant tree coverage. Its proximity to the Highland-Bush Anderson Lakes Park Reserve make it a natural home for wildlife. Environmental impact assessments, public safety, and traffic studies, along with market analysis and impacts to property investments, should inform decisions on these sort of ordinance changes. Thank you, Counsel, for the time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Rochelle Gibbs?
Good evening, thank you, Mayor and Counsel, for inviting us to speak tonight. My name is Rochelle, and I was raised in Bloomington. I lived on 92nd and Poplar Bridge Road, all through my childhood. I eventually left and made my way to California, where the housing density was high. Even nice areas felt cramped and boxed in. Cars, garbage bins, boats, and other residential paraphernalia littered front lawns and curb sides. We returned to Minnesota, looking for the right home in an area with good schools and job opportunities. All the while, my home in Bloomington stuck in my memory, and eventually, we purchased that home that I grew up in, and we've been there since 2011. At around 18,000 square feet, and a lot sized just under half an acre, it is a modest and older house, but it suits us perfectly. It's everything we were looking for, including a nice backyard to breathe in, where we don't feel that we're on top of our neighbors, even though we love our neighbors dearly. So today, I am concerned and object to this residential rezoning proposal. I feel that we're going to lose that breathing space. It will also reduce our property values, increase pollution, and create other negative impacts. And, like many other people, the property value is a big concern for me. We are not nearly near that Bloomington median income level in my household, there's many families like that too, so you're sort of taking away our investment property if this goes through. And then, along with increasing density through property subdivision, I would also be concerned that making minimum setbacks to 30 feet would also risk the gentrification and building McMansions right up to the street sides that we all recognize in some of our neighboring In the documentation, the city provides some examples with setbacks, and I would just ask that that is looked at closer, I feel that it's being proposed too simply, and the examples are too convenient, in my opinion. And I think reducing those setbacks, again, reduces the green space, and all of that is critical in dispersing rainwater, and again, with climate change upon us, that type of design would be negligent. Along with my objection to this proposal, I would also like to highlight two additional items that I find troublesome. The first one is subpar communication and outreach efforts with this proposal, and then the second one is poor planning and accounting for the effects that such a rezoning would bring. For the point regarding effective communications, it's the 21st century, and we live in a town that has a wonderful newsletter called The Briefing, has a great website, and I watch those often, I don't engage in social media that much, and I think with nearly 90,000 residents here, to not have that information at the forefront of the briefings or the website was very unthoughtful. I actually have a year's worth of communications from the city, and not a single spotlight on this issue. I'm happy to... I'm happy to leave that here. Lots of headlines, but nothing about rezoning. So I think that needs to be looked at, and I think the conversation would need to continue on for this proposal. Additionally, if you look at the conversations or the documents that are out there, some of the proposal items do not have enough details. For example, the proposal suggests that continuity will be maintained in neighborhood density, so I'm wondering how that will happen, and this is a hypothetical question, but let's suppose that two lots are subdividing, and each half-acre, you know, comes together. So two lots become one acre, and 12 houses are now on that subdivided lot, but one of the neighbors doesn't want to subdivide. So then you have this little area that is only one house. So how are you keeping continuity? Does that homeowner now become forced to subdivide? So those are the types of things that I would like to have looked at further. I think it's being too rushed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs.
Hello, my name is Mara Lewandowski, and I am, my husband and I have been residents of Bloomington for over 40 years. We live at 916 Vincent, and my comment has to do with cars, cars, cars. The off-street parking, I'm just gonna read my comments here. With too many, with, too many cars come with higher-density properties, specifically cars parked along the street. Pedestrian safety is at risk. When there are more people in a house or on a property, they bring more cars. The cars get parked on the street. The rules or ordinances to park cars in the driveway, I know that you're trying to change those in some ways, but I don't think they'll be followed. They aren't followed right now. People won't juggle, won't rearrange their cars every time someone comes and goes. It's not realistic, or practical, or enforceable. It's the street where those cars are gonna be parked. And why is this a problem? I'll give you a real-life example and why I'm here tonight. In my neighborhood, there's a house with a number of people living together, and they have a lot of cars. I have pictures here. There's three cars in the driveway filling it up because some are trucks. There's, it's a corner lot, so there's three or four on the corner, and another three to four in the front. That means about nine cars there, maybe 10 sometimes. And that's without an accessory dwelling. It's a big lot, so they probably could even have an accessory dwelling on there and then have more cars. Now, directly across the street from them is another house with a lot of people, a lot of cars. They also bleed out from their driveway, they fill up their driveway and along the street. So when I come around the corner, taking a walk down to the park, which is three blocks away, there's a school, a park, a playground, the creek, there's a lot of walkers, I essentially am in a car corridor, and I'm in the line of traffic. There's no side way for me to go. I can't go up against a curb because the cars are parked there. There is a car corridor, and I can't believe that there won't be a safety problem this way. There's kids who ride bikes, there's women and men pushing strollers. If we're gonna come to a car corridor, we have to be in the street. There's density in Minneapolis with car corridors there, but they have sidewalks. We do not have sidewalks. The yards in my neighborhood are large. I think secondary dwellings would be allowed on most under this new proposal. But again, many cars would come with these dwellings, and they will be parked along the street. I don't think there's enough, I don't think there would be enforcement against that. I think it would just happen. So in this way, I'm against this proposal.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Curry, and then the next three on deck would be Nick Eishen, Fred Sauer, and Abdullah Farah. If you could all please kind of line up while Mr. Curry is speaking. Good evening. Welcome back.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of Council, my name is Dan Curry. I live at 105 Norman Ridge Drive in the city of Bloomington. First, I just wanna ask, as a follow-up for Nick, the 121-foot-wide lot, just, I don't understand how lots are removed from the potential to split there when you can just split 121 into 60 and 1/2 feet. So, just as some general catch-up, the past couple of months have been a journey. In the last two weeks, I believe Nick and I have worked collaboratively to understand the challenges the city of Norman Ridge faced to help refine our solutions. Everyone on the Council should have received the March 17th letter from Lurk and Hoffman, so I'm going to read a few of the high points to ensure they are understood by Council. As the 2040 Comprehensive Plan observes, Bloomington's residential areas are already diverse. As we understand it, the proposed revisions to the R1 district are not intended to make all neighborhoods alike, but to allow additional homes to be built as the city continues to grow. With this goal in mind, the revised ordinance should provide for incremental change and development within existing neighborhoods. As the 2040 Plan states, "The goals of the city's residential land use are to enhance neighborhood identity and sense of community while preserving the quality of existing housing and expanding housing options." We propose, thanks, Nick, we propose retaining the median lot width requirement at 50%. We believe our proposed revision creates greater access to subdividable lots while maintaining the neighborhood identity espoused by the 2040 Plan, encouraging neighborhoods to become incrementally more dense. The ultimate goal of the proposed revision is to allow lots to be subdivided, but with the neighborhood lens, that there is a relationship between the proposed subdivision and the expectations of the neighborhood today. Norman Ridge and neighborhoods throughout the city would still be eligible for subdivision and lot development. During our conversations with city staff and in close review of the 2040 Plan and the city's strategic priorities, it became clear that the city has significant goals around sustainability. Norman Ridge, as Kim had mentioned, is characterized by open space, wetlands, and tree cover. So we encouraged the city to incorporate heightened environmental review within significant environmental corridors. As the draft ordinance was designed with the expectation that development would be spread evenly throughout the city, here, I'm sorry, the draft ordinance was designed with the expectation that development would be spread evenly throughout the city. But for Norman Ridge, based on the current lot sizes and age of existing houses, there are a significant number of lots eligible for redevelopment. Without taking into account a tie into the neighborhood, the neighborhood lens as we proposed here, this ordinance is inconsistent with numerous 2040 Plan goals, specifically based on the known impact Norman Ridge neighborhood in particular. Eliminating any reference to the median lot width does not incentivize equitable distribution of development, does not mitigate impacts on natural resources, or use land use controls to preserve the character of low-density residential neighborhoods. It does not ensure that redevelopment improves local conditions. Our modification is reasonable and better addresses the goals of the Comprehensive Plan. So we believe the 50% proposal is a very reasonable ask for the city, which is why we'd also like the city to consider to put further consideration into the environmental impact of the ordinance. Cities on the coast have adopted environmentally supportive residential overlay districts or residential zones. We'd like Bloomington to put further consideration into this. So in closing, over 60% of our neighborhood, as well as residents from Briar and Mount Normandale, signed in support of this approach and are interested in collaborating. We do not want to obstruct the goals of the city. We want to protect the natural resources in the area and ensure neighborhood safety does not decline. So the adoption of our proposal, to me, is not a question of whether the city prioritizes affordable housing versus the environment, it's a question of how the city wants to govern. So I challenge the city to collaborate with its residents and consider every aspect of this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Mr. Erickson, and I'm gonna apologize, just a blanket apology for butchering last names here. I think I did for a bunch of folks already.
It's quite all right. I have very messy handwriting, so don't worry.
I will agree with that, but I apologize for you there. It's, uh...
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. My name's Nick Erickson. I represent Housing First Minnesota. Our organization is a group of builders, developers, remodelers, and the trade partners that built Bloomington and really the communities across the Twin Cities. Our members are experts in building the places and communities we call home. We're a committed partner to ending veterans homelessness in Minnesota through our Housing First Minnesota Foundation, and our organization's mission is homeownership opportunities for all. And it's that mission that brings me here today. And I just wanted to begin by thanking the Council, Mr. Mayor, and especially the staff for all the work done on this proposal, because this reflects conversations going on in city councils, state legislatures across the country right now. To put the conversation for Bloomington and the Minneapolis-St. Paul-Bloomington metropolitan area into perspective, we simply have one of the most broken housing markets in the country. As noted by staff during the presentation, we have the largest homeownership equity gap of any major market here in America, and that's right here in the MSP Bloomington region. Comparing Minnesota across the rest of the country, we have, at least in the region, the most expensive new housings in the country. We are, to date, the most expensive in the region. In fact, we're almost $100,000 more on average than Illinois and North Dakota, the closest peers, and about $120,000 more expensive than in Wisconsin. New starter homes in this market are at less than 1.7%, and it really, that reflects the brokenness of a housing market that seen in California, Oregon, Washington, and the coastal regions than it does to our Midwestern peers. And really, that's why this proposal is really good for community, for your community, it's good for the Twin Cities, and it's a conversation that we need to be having more about. This proposal increases housing options. It is not a one-size-fits-all approach. It brings more housing opportunity. It helps Bloomington grow into the future. It reduces housing costs. We know that when you increase density, you remove barriers like parking mandates and other costly additions to the cost of a home. It reduces costs and increases housing access to the community. It helps increase housing supply. Currently, we have a massive housing deficit in the state. It's pegged as high as 95,000 units. Bloomington alone can't solve that, but neither can any community. This is a conversation that has to be had across the state. And interestingly, this proposal today that you're reviewing reflects the bold vision of a bipartisan set of lawmakers across the country, and it is across the political spectrum. This idea of housing affordability and access through zoning modernization is seen as something that everyone gathers to because homeownership matters, home opportunities and housing access matter. They drive almost every outcome that we as individuals can have in our life. And I just, I know you have a lot of speakers, so I'll be respectful for everyone's time. I just wanna point out that whenever we have conversations of housing access, housing affordability, housing inventory, we often reflect on this idea of property rights, local control, and what that give and take is. And I just wanna, you know, remind you that really, nothing in this proposal mandates you as a landowner do anything to your property. It just allows you to choose what to do with it, and that is hopefully an option that allows more homeownership opportunities that all of us in this room have had, and ensure that that opportunity is available for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Appreciate it. Fred Sauer, Mr. Sauer. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, thank you for allowing me to address the Council this evening. I have enjoyed living in Bloomington for over 32 years now. The city has a lot to offer. It's a great place to live, and it currently has some of the most affordable housing in the Twin Cities market. I've seen in the Bloomington briefing and on the website about many programs to help homeowners keep their homes, maintain them, fix them up. These seem like good programs, that they're great ideas. We keep the affordable housing in this city. As to the changes before us tonight, one of the four stated goals, of the four stated goals tonight in the project, only increased affordability is something that really seems to be measurable. That's the only quantifiable one that you have there. The proposed changes will not help affordability in general, although, yeah, granted, for new homes, yes, it could decrease the cost of a new home. But what's gonna happen, if you pass this, you'll be increasing the price pressure on existing properties. A 120-foot property could be divided into two. Therefore, it will have an increased value. It will be less affordable. An 80-foot or more property would also have the potential for a two-family house, again, increasing its value. This is Economics 101, supply and demand. You've already done that. And even just the possibility of this proposal being passed, has, there's been increases in prices already. You could see it on our street. On top of that, tearing down a less expensive home and building two much more expensive homes does not seem to be an increase in affordability, and I certainly fail to see how creating more expensive homes will help the BIPOC community increase homeownership. It seems to me that the real goal of the proposed changes is to increase the density of the R1 districts. In fact, the report says as much, and I quote from the report, "Increasing the supply of family housing, especially owner-occupied housing, will signal success." That has nothing to do with your goals. You said what your goals are. That is not a signal of success. This does not correlate with the stated goals of the change. Any increase in density is, if an increase of the density is the goal of the changes, why isn't it stated that way? Why didn't you make it clear to us at the very beginning that that is the goal of these And even later on in the report, it's talking about the density. Continued measured growth benefits residents in many ways. Growth supports robust, healthy schools, strengthens its tax base, provides park dedication funds for improved parks, and supports added commercial services. Just a few benefits. It's completely clear that the stated goals and the stated measurement of success are not in alignment. In the case of a desirable subsidized project, such as the one on 9030 Park Avenue, there are other ways that the city could allow such a project to go forward. They don't have to rezone all of R1 to do that. You know, the project probably has a lot of positives to it. I'm in favor of affordable housing here. If you should decide to approve these changes, I don't believe it's realistic that you're gonna be able to undo them in the future. You say you can scale them back in the report, but that's it. I ask the Council to look beyond the rosy pictures painted by the report and to look what will really happen. Don't be misled by the terms "affordable" and "affordability" scattered throughout this report, and look at how they are actually used there.
Mr. Sauer, your five minutes are up.
Can I just say thank you very much for letting me speak, and I ask you to vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Farah, and then on deck here, we have Denise Royer, John Lovold, and Kevin Schilling. If you could come forward as well. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Abdullah Farah. I'm a community organizer and a leader with my community, also Dar Faruk Center, a father of four and a resident here in Bloomington. I have dedicated my my time to improving the lives of our local community members here and across the state. And one pressing concern I saw among many residents even here in Bloomington is the lack of affordable housing and homeownership options. And the proposed zoning amendments for single and two-family dwellings have the potential to significantly increase affordable housing options and homeownership in our city, and will allow our city to be the lead in bringing innovative ways to create housing options for many families. Again, these are options, and I don't believe in limiting options, as long as people get to choose. By modifying requirements related to lot sizes, unit sizes of street parking garages, setbacks, and impervious service standards, these amendments can create a more inclusive housing market for all residents and make our communities more vibrant. Specifically by amending chapters 1921 and 22 of the city council can make a significant impact on the lives of families striving for stability and want to make Bloomington home. I'm a strong advocate for these changes, and I encourage the city council to approve the proposed amendments to create a more vibrant and diverse community here in Bloomington. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Denise Royer, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Bussey and city council members. My name is Denise Royer. I live at 10348 Pleasant Avenue South in Bloomington. The zip code is 55420. I am here to ask you to vote yes on the proposed city code amendments for single and twin and two-family homes. As a Bloomington resident, I highly value having a range of housing options for Bloomington residents. I feel it is extremely important for the economic well-being of our community as well as the health of the residents. Most of the land in Bloomington has been developed, and thus to create new options for more moderately priced homes, we need to concentrate, as staff has indicated, on the infill lots and/or larger lots that could be subdivided if owners are interested. The creation of smaller, more moderate homes would potentially provide opportunities for first-time homeowners, seniors who want to transition to smaller housing but still remain in our city, as well as individuals and families who consider themselves minimalist and value smaller living space. The economic benefit to our city with having more housing options would be that people who want to continue to live here could hopefully do so, and in turn would continue to spend money in our community, helping our business economy, as well as homeowners would, as homeowners, they would continue to contribute to the tax base. The health benefit to residents that I see, for those who are able to continue to live in our city rather than move to another city that meets their housing needs, is that they can more easily maintain social connections with friends and neighbors. Having strong, positive social connections has been found to be a very positive factor, contributing to a person's health as they age. In regards to parking issues, I live on a block that has four homes in a row, including the one that my husband and I live in. And these four homes all have single tuck-under garages, which was permitted when our houses were built in the mid-'50s. We have one car in the garage. We have room for four others in our double-wide driveway. Our neighborhood has not had a problem with street parking. In terms of the infill homes, based on the information provided by the city, we're looking at potentially maybe over a 10-year time period, 100 up to perhaps 200 new homes being created as a potential. These are not huge numbers, and yet for families that would move into those houses, this would be a big, significant deal. And it would make, I guess I feel moving, taking small steps towards reaching these goals would be better than no steps whatsoever. Many Bloomington residents who are homeowners have worked very hard to become, to be able to buy and own their homes. Likewise, many Bloomington residents who are not homeowners have also worked very hard and have not yet been able to buy and own a home. Some of us have had some privileges along the way that have helped us in buying a home. It might be through help with a down payment by a friend, relative, or some other types of assistance with a home mortgage. Others have not had these privileges due to factors that might include their family of origin, the place of where they were born or lived, where they were educated, or an absence of generational wealth, which occurs with homeownership. I feel that it is time that our city reduce some of these barriers so that these individuals seeking homeownership of moderately priced homes can have this as a reality. Bloomington's strategic plan is Bloomington tomorrow together. To me, this includes working together to create solutions towards new housing options. I feel we all do better when we all do better. Therefore, I am requesting you vote yes on the city code amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Royer. John?
Mayor Bussey, council members, I'm John Lovold. I work for the Minnesota Assistance Council for Veterans. Our mission is ending veteran homelessness. The way we do that is by providing affordable housing for veterans. I'm here tonight to hear about all of the concerns of the city, to hear about the proposal. And it all is very exciting to me to see the city of Bloomington looking into making these types of changes. Very specifically, I don't live in Bloomington, and I understand people's concerns. If you've grown up here, that this could be changing. I do, did grow up in Minnesota, in rural Minnesota, so I understand having space is important, too. But what I can tell you about the housing problem and affordability and the veterans that we serve is that there's currently 300 and some veterans, 330 veterans on the homeless registry. The vast majority that have entered the homeless registry in the last 90 days have been 55 and up. The vast majority of the clients that we're serving right now are in that age demographic as well, and smaller, single-story homes that would not, for individuals, most of the individuals that we're serving need one-bedroom units. They need one-bedroom or small homes. MACV has been on the leading edge of working with ADUs in the city of Minneapolis. We've placed two behind two of our homes. We're very small lots, but they fit in just fine, and we were able to provide parking on-site as well. So, anything that makes and creates more opportunity, we're excited about. We've worked with the city of Bloomington before. We have a house on Penn Avenue that we opened in 2020, and we'd be very excited to do something again with this city, with this forward-thinking. One thing I would just ask the council to consider, as well as the residents to consider, is that many of the places where MACV has built or made and created opportunities with Housing First and their builders have been donated lots. Donated lots often come, as we would say, as an orphan lot. There's a reason it was donated. It might be oddly shaped, or it might have some type of requirement that a lot of the easing of these regulations will make easier for those types of lots to be used. City of Duluth donated two tiny lots to us this last year that we placed two ADUs on in a cluster style, that we were able to do something with. With regulations the way they are right now, that would still just be a corner triangular lot that would be unusable with the types of setbacks and requirements that the city has here right now. So, it might not be somebody's backyard specifically, but the land that you have that you couldn't otherwise use by changing these rules will make something available to organizations like ours that are ready to build here in Bloomington to create opportunities for veterans, affordable options specifically, that I think is meeting the intent of the group, or the intent of the proposal. So, we would support any vote yes for that change. Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lovold. Appreciate it. Mr. Schilling, and then our last three speakers who signed up, and I'm going to phone a friend on these last couple of names here. Jack Dickens?
Dickinson?
Dickinson? Okay, we'll go with that. Mohammed, and then Amina Adan. Am I even close on any of those names? Mr. Schilling, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Appreciate the time. Kevin Schilling, 71 Norman Ridge. I've been in Bloomington for 23 years. Just have a few comments to make about the proposal and the website, or some things that are on the city's website. First, regarding the response from the public, from tonight's agenda, and I quote, "The nature of the correspondence received from the public to date is largely in opposition to the proposal." When I looked through those letters, I saw two that supported, and all the rest did not, from the citizens. There's other groups that commented, but I'm just talking about the people that live here. There isn't, there doesn't seem to be a significant push from residents of this specific proposal to be passed. And what is most likely going to happen from the changes of this, we're going to have developers who will buy the lots and create more expenses, more expensive homes on smaller lots. It was going to happen across the street from our house. We stopped it. By your action in the last meeting, that got stopped, and we took action to make sure that it's not going to happen. So, they were going to build three units, and it was going to be over a million dollars of house, houses that were going to be built there. That's not affordable. Next, I'd like to comment on the Exhibit 1 from the proposal tonight. The minimum lot areas and width of peer communities, if you look at that, that puts us in the Richfield level. We were in Richfield before we moved to Bloomington 23 years ago. We don't want to be in Richfield. I hope the city doesn't make us Richfield, or Minneapolis, or any other place that has this density of housing. There's a lot of places that have that, and that's great. We have density in Bloomington. Look all over the place. There is that density. Our first home in Bloomington was on a much denser area. We had five houses that I could hear the neighbors telephone and their conversation if I opened my bedroom window. There's a lot of that in here already. We don't need the change to do this. Couple other things I want to point out from some other city documents. From the city's charter and code of ordinances, and I'm paraphrasing, but it reads, "The code of ordinances contains laws that shape our city and its services to keep residents safe, maintain property values, and govern private activities in a manner that balances the protection of individual rights with the promotion of the public health, safety, and welfare." In our neighborhood, the code changes seem to be against those main purposes of the code of ordinances. First, these changes don't keep us safe. It's going to increase traffic, increase the potential for on-street parking, and as other people said, there's not sidewalks in Bloomington. This is going to be an issue. Second, will the proposal maintain property values? I can't tell you that. Nobody can tell me that. Our planners, who did a great job, couldn't tell us that today. But I can tell you what I would do. I wouldn't buy into an overly developed, dense neighborhood. That's just not what we moved to Bloomington for. Third, does this proposal protect our individual rights? According to Dan, 60% of the neighbors in our neighborhood do not think this does that. We think our rights are being infringed on by making these changes of the code, which could result in major changes to our neighborhood after we had bought our property and made significant investment under the rules of the current code. As somebody else said, most people's largest investment is their home, and this is going to impact everybody. Last couple of things. The HRA, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, one of its missions, the second item in the mission statement, is to coordinate the city's effort to preserve existing neighborhoods, end quote. That's what we're trying to do. We want to preserve our neighborhood. It's a great neighborhood. You've had a lot of people speak about it, write in about it. We don't want it to change. There are so many things that we appreciate about it. When we moved in, I laid down with my son and my wife on his bed, and we looked out the window, and we thought, oh, wow. You know what? This is great. This is just like being in our friend's cabin. You can't just make that go, that's going to go away if you make this dense housing everywhere in Bloomington. There's enough room here that we can have neighborhoods like ours, and it doesn't have to be this one-size-fits-all for the city. I just want to conclude, based on the citizens of Bloomington that have spoken out against this, we're looking for something that's a better proposal than what's being proposed tonight. And I just want to say thank you for everybody here. Appreciate your time and consideration. And I know the chief left, but I wanted to thank the chief and his, all of the police in Bloomington for what they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Mr. Dickinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the city council, for allowing an open forum on proposed zoning changes in the Norman Ridge Drive neighborhood. My name is Jack Dickinson, and I have lived at 140 Norman Ridge Drive for over 20 years. I would like to briefly speak on two aspects of those proposes, the proposed changes that concern me the most. First, on a daily basis, I see a child of approximately four or five years old walking on the road with his grandmother during the school year. The family lives directly to the north of me at 144 Norman Ridge Drive. This happens because unlike in the past years, when the Bloomington school bus system would drop children off in front of their homes, they no longer do so. Instead, the children are dropped off at the intersection of Briar Lane in Norman Ridge Drive, which is approximately a quarter of a mile away from our homes. On that quarter of a mile stretch of road, there exists a blind curve that is approximately 60 yards in length whereby one is unable to see oncoming traffic from a distance of no greater than 25 feet. Since there are no sidewalks on Norman Ridge Drive, this is an incredible safety concern for anyone walking on the 60-yard segment of road without even mentioning the increased risk for an elementary school child. In my view, because there are no sidewalks, unlike other parts of Bloomington that do have sidewalks, there's never been any sidewalks on Norman Ridge Drive. There could be tragic consequences for a pedestrian in the future. So therefore, I would ask the council to be very cautious with regard to increased traffic density as a result of dramatic zoning changes. Secondly, if I understand Bloomington's 2040 comprehensive plan correctly, the goals of the city's residential land use are to enhance neighborhood identity while preserving the quality of existing housing and expanding housing options. Now, if the city were to go ahead without revision to the proposed rezoning of the Norman Ridge Drive neighborhood, one of the partials on Norman Ridge Drive, specifically number 80, could be, could potentially be subdivided by a strictly-for-profit land developer, and there's a lot of them out there, into 7,500 square feet lots. In conclusion, I would ask, how does this in any way, shape, or form address the city's 2040 plan mandate of preserving the quality of Norman Ridge Drive's existing housing? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson.
Thank you.
So next on our list, I think it's M-A-X-A-M-A-D, I believe? Is that? No? Anyone? Then Amina. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council members. Hi, my name is Amina Adan, and I'm proud to call our city home. As a proud member of Bloomington Muslim community, a longtime educator, and a mother of four beautiful growing girls, I can attest to the need of affordable and accessible housing in our area. The proposed amendments to the zoning standards for single and two-family dwellings will not only benefit my family, but many others in our community who are seeking homeownership opportunities. The flexibility in lots, unit sizes, and off-street parking will enable more families to find a suitable home that will enable more families to find a suitable home that meets their needs without breaking the bank. As an educator in our community, I see firsthand the effects of housing and the lack of it in our Bloomington neighborhoods. Additionally, changes in the setbacks and impervious surface standards can potentially lead to more environmentally friendly development practices, benefiting community as whole. I firmly believe that these amendments, as well as the Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, will create a more inclusive and diverse housing market in Bloomington, closing the homeownership opportunity gap. I wholeheartedly support these changes and urge the City Council to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That was all the folks we had signed up to speak. Is there anyone else here in the chambers that would like to speak on this? I thought you were gonna speak again, Nick. Good evening, welcome.
Hello, welcome, thank you. I'm Marie Maryam, 8393 Knox. I'm a Realtor of 24 years. One question I have is, I thought I saw a multi-generational quality to the presentation, and I don't understand how that would be enforced, or if that is even real as a goal. If grandma lives in the backyard and she dies, who's gonna be the multi-generational person that moves in? Speaking for myself, I was in a big house in Bloomington. I got divorced. I wanted to find a small house in Bloomington, and it was hard to find. I lived in my daughter's unfinished basement for seven months until I found one that I liked. So I understand the need as a Realtor to have more houses available. And I guess what I would say is maybe relaxing some of the square footage requirements. 1040 isn't a very big house, but I live in a 976 square foot house, and it does me just fine. So rather than do the higher density to bring about more options for affordable housing, I think relaxing some of the requirements for size would be a better way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Others who wish to speak? Good evening and welcome. If you could identify yourself, please.
Sure. My name is Dawn Dolan, and I live at 66 Norman Ridge Drive. The first thing I wanna say is Bloomington is the crown jewel of the metro. It is the crown jewel because it is affordable, it is diverse, it is green, and it is a community. And I think you've seen that tonight and over the last couple of months, as people across Bloomington show their love for this community, right? And are concerned for what the city is trying to do. I mean, along with other Norman Ridge neighbors and other Bloomington residents, I am against this proposal. We heard earlier tonight from Parks and Recs and all the wonderful things they are doing to maintain and preserve and expand our parks, our arts, and the things that make Bloomington a community. We feel the same way about our neighborhood. And we want to maintain and preserve the diversity of that neighborhood, the green space, you know, the creeks, the woods, the animals, watching the deer and the fox and the coyotes run all over the neighborhood at night. You know, every night we catch them. Our kids used to name them when they were younger, as a deer went by. We also heard from the Sustainability Commission and all the wonderful and important initiatives they are trying to do to keep Bloomington green. We want to keep Bloomington green. We want to keep Norman Ridge green. Again, you know, we desire to maintain our community. We desire to maintain our neighborhood. And we desire to keep Bloomington the crown jewel of the metro. I've lived here for 18 years. I moved into Norman Ridge because it was different. It was a unique community within Bloomington. You are in the city, but you're part of the neighborhood. You don't feel like it. The occasional airplane drives overhead to remind you, but you can't hear 494. You can't really hear the traffic on Normandale, and that's because of the nature. It's because of the trees and the, you know, the larger lot sizes and the homes that are developed and that are mature. And that is what we love about it. You know, I feel like our neighborhood does represent the diversity of Bloomington. You know, we have people of different ethnic groups. We have people of different ages. We have elderly people, small families, you know, multiple families. And as an example, we have an annual Chili Fest every year where the entire neighborhood comes together. Last year, our neighborhood raised and contributed over a pickup truck full of food and non-perishable items for Veep. You know, and that was just our way of wanting to give back to the community in appreciating the way Bloomington is today and the way Norman Ridge is today. So I respectfully ask you to please reconsider this proposal, vote it down, consider the impact to the broader community, consider the impact to the environment, and let's take some time to really think through this so we preserve what we all love so much about Bloomington and keep it that crown jewel of the metro. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Anyone else in the chambers wish to speak? Please come on forward. Don't be shy.
Thank you for giving us this time. I am Susan Jacobson, and I also live on Norman Ridge Drive. And the one thing I keep hearing from this, which has never been explained, is what does affordable housing mean? I've worked in the architecture field for over 40 years, and in the last five to seven years, all this affordable housing supposedly was being built in the Twin Cities, and it wasn't affordable. It was too expensive for other people, for those, for people to, to buy, or to buy, or what it's gotten to be is rent. And that's the one thing I don't wanna see happen. It seems like if we go to two-family houses and then it goes to multifamily apartments where you have no setbacks. You know, I don't think any of us wanna live like that in Bloomington. So could someone on the panel tell me what affordable housing means? Is it a percent of what you make? Is it subsidized by the city? What is it? Nobody understands the terms. The contractors that are building all the apartments, there's a loophole to where they're not allowing the 10% of the apartments to be affordable. They're doing something else because they can't make money off the buildings. So that is, that's the scary part for me. Construction is so expensive right now. To tear down a house, to build two more smaller houses, I don't see where the money's gonna, where it's gonna be profitable. You're gonna have the environment of all that when you're tearing that house down. So that's, that's my dilemma here, besides everything else. So if somebody can explain that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Others in the chambers?
Does this one also work? Okay, great.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Mona Nagib. I live at 314 Norman Ridge Drive. I have three school-aged children. My youngest being a preschooler, who has been riding the school bus for the first time this year. I also live with my father, who is 83. So we do live in a multi-generational home that we have been expanding over the last year to make more comfortable for all of us. I appreciate that the city of Bloomington provides school transportation for the children on our block. Understanding the unique nature of our street, including dangerous blind spots and steep hills, kids on Norman Ridge Drive have always been picked up and dropped off directly in front of their houses. A change was made last year during the pandemic and the bus driver shortage that forced preschoolers, elementary kids, and middle schoolers alike to walk to an arbitrary spot on our street, gravely compromising the safety of our children. After contacting the Director of Transportation on numerous occasions over this past year, please refer to an email chain and also photos provided to council. We have had no success in resolving the safety concerns of the parents and residents on our block. As a matter of fact, the Transportation Department has ceased to engage with us on this topic. The fact of the matter is that I know Norman Ridge Drive better than anyone mapping out a bus route. My only goal is to keep our children as safe as possible and to minimize any undue liability to the bus drivers. I believe staffing and budget guidelines may have come before our children's safety, unfortunately, and this sentiment has been echoed amongst a handful of bus drivers that I've spoken with, who are equally as frustrated with the unsafe nature of the most recent changes to the bus stops on Norman Ridge Drive. I realize this might be an aside issue, but it definitely relates to the new development and the new proposal. So the additional traffic on our street and off-street parking will further endanger schoolchildren walking to the bus stop every day. I request the council to look into this matter further. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you. Last call here in the chambers. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, my name, council members and Mr. Mayor, my name is Amanda Lulamo. I live at 26 Norman Ridge Drive, and I've lived there for 13 years. And I wasn't going to speak, but I felt compelled to speak after hearing my neighbors. So my apologies if my thoughts are a bit scattered. But I'm a mother of two. My children also live on this very busy road. We're close to Normandale. And oftentimes, when there is rush hour traffic, people cut through our neighborhood to get around to a stoplight. So it's very busy already. So adding more houses and things to the potential neighborhood will contribute to traffic and potentially off-street parking, which we don't have a lot of off-street parking right now. That's a concern of mine. But also, just the idea of touching on the affordable housing. I am all for more affordable housing, whether it's in Minnesota or if it's in Bloomington. But I am concerned about, on Norman Ridge Drive, will it really be affordable? And I thought it was interesting, a comment that our neighbor made about the large lot that was recently for sale that was going to be split into three, and that it sounded like there was proposed three $1 million homes that were gonna go onto it. You know, that's not affordable. And my husband and I have owned several rental properties ourselves in South Minneapolis. And, you know, our goal is not to make it affordable. It's to make money. And the reason that we wanna make money is so that we could buy a nice home in Bloomington where we could raise our kids in a large lot with a beautiful home. And, you know, that's part of, you know, the way that we're living out, you know, our American dream, if you will, right? We're business savvy. And there's a lot of people that are business savvy as well, and I think that will take the opportunity to make some of these implemented changes to make themselves millions and millions of dollars, right? So one thing I would encourage is to not adopt the policy tonight, but to go back to the, the folks who, you know, have already put a lot of thought in, are a lot smarter than me on this, and ask, you know, how can we, wherever it's going to be in Bloomington, ensure the housing is going to be affordable? And go to some of the folks here tonight who are talking about, hey, we do need more affordable housing. We don't wanna be renting in Bloomington. We wanna be living in our own homes that we can afford to pay for. I don't know what that looks like, but I feel like that's a better solution than just sort of swiping a paintbrush across all of Bloomington and, and changing the zoning. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess it's my turn. I'm Deb Knutson. I also live on Norman Ridge. Been there 13 years. And I want you to vote no for the zoning, but for part of the reasons that we brushed on is Norman Ridge, the infrastructure or the road that goes through Norman Ridge is not large enough to hold or carry on the amount of traffic that that increased house was. An example of this, it was, how many months ago? I'm not really sure. Little over a year ago, I walked the ridge, right? We all walk the ridge. But I walk the ridge with my dog, okay? Three dogs, but I do walk them. And the blind spots that are within Norman Ridge is scary enough, not even talking about the small children. My dog was hit by an Amazon truck coming around that ridge. What are we supposed to do about that, right? I mean, the increased traffic, even on Norman Ridge, where currently with the Amazon drivers, has caused safety issues not only for our children, but for anybody that's utilizing the road, whether it's a car or you're walking your dogs. But I want you to think about that and please vote no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you could, if you have an attorney, a petition, if you could just submit that to the Council Secretary, that'd be great. Let's see, anybody else jumping up in the chambers here? Mr. Sable, I think we've got one person on the phone. Are they looking to speak?
Mr. Mayor, they are. I have a caller with the prefix 651235. I am going to unmute you. Caller 651235, you are on.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Steve Furlong. I'm a developer in the city of Bloomington, and having completed three two-family dwellings and two single-family homes in the last six years. Those are new homes for eight new families in our city. Great people. I met every one of them. Would love to have them as a neighbor. My intent is to create more ownership opportunities. Affordable housing is difficult, not impossible, but difficult to create with new construction. But what it does is presents the opportunity for a new home for a family or individual in Bloomington who then vacates their existing home that would be considered affordable. So yes, new development does create affordable housing. As a metro region, we need to be able to create more homes. Unfortunately, these proposed changes alone will not generate enough opportunity to meet all the needs of our community. However, they are a step in the right direction in that we send a message to other municipalities that positive change can be made. Mr. Johnson, who has, by the way, given several great presentations on this, spoke tonight about economics that will drive redevelopment types. Equitable redevelopment follows the neighborhood it's in. The developer community wouldn't build a $500,000 home in the midst of million-dollar homes, nor in the midst of $250,000 homes. From a marketing standpoint, it's important that we create development plans that mirror the neighborhood as best as possible, yet follow all of the desired parameters for the development. Our state representative, the Belkins, once authored a piece in the Star Tribune that equated development today to jumping through flaming hoops. The proposed changes tonight will not diminish those flaming hoops. The environment today in Bloomington for developers is fraught with risk, low margin, and many overlays of multiple, sometimes even competing jurisdictions. We've heard tonight a wide range of concerns from our neighbors. They are legitimate concerns that are addressed through all facets of redevelopment, the multiple jurisdictions, city staff review of development plans, the economic aspects, and to get right to the end of a very long list, development plans should be reviewed with neighbors. And in each case, I've been involved, and they are before any work begins. Who we largely haven't heard- Who we largely haven't heard from are the dozens of people I speak to on a weekly basis that want single-level living in our city, an opportunity to own a desirable home in our city, or simply even to be able to own a home. Nearly every home in Bloomington today sits on what was a farm pit or an undeveloped woods. I'm sure the same conversation happened in this chamber when yet another farmer sold out his asparagus field to Orrin Thompson to build Rambler's. We need development on that scale. Yet, as we all know, infill redevelopment is a significant greater challenge that will never present that same opportunity. Finally, city councils across the metros should all be passing measures like this to make their municipalities more inclusive, more sustainable, along with some other things, and to do the right thing for their community, to be brave and to make progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Furlong. Last call, last chance for anybody who wishes to speak on this in the chambers.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Claire Seaver, eighty-five nineteen Hag Circle. I wasn't planning on talking either tonight, but then seeing all the neighbors, and by neighbors, I don't mean people who live directly next to us, but people just in Bloomington. So I was just kind of thinking, why does this have to be a blanket change? Why can't this be looked at at an individual basis? I know that we do need additional housing, but just kind of making a blanket statement and changing everything, that's, that doesn't make sense. Since to me, since every neighborhood is unique. It was mentioned that an owner can do what they want with their property, but that owner will be the developer who changes the neighborhood and then doesn't have to live in the density and any change or issues that that might cause either. And think, you know, going back to the blanket change, thinking back at the rezoning issue for the townhomes on eighty-sixth and Penn and all the issues and lawsuits that occurred after that. We know that once this change is made, we can't put that back in the box, and we have to live with whatever changes we make. So I guess that was all I really have to say, and I encourage you not to make this blanket change.
Thank you. Thank you for signing in as well. Thank you very much.
Hi there.
Good evening, welcome.
Warm in here.
It is.
My name is Laura Hunt. I thank you all for your time and listening to all of the concerns. I really just wanted to focus on the concept of one-size-fits-all. So when you think about that concept, it's kind of interesting, because as I look around this room and all of our community members, and I look around at the council and the council members, we've got some great diversity here in Bloomington. One-size-fits-all, you buy an item online, it'll fit, it's going to be great. You try it on, doesn't quite work for you. When I think about a blanket ordinance and zoning, for for all of Bloomington, I think about how that could impact each unique lot, family and owner. There isn't really a great one-size-fits-all solution, which is why we have a council that hears different requests and proposals for developments, changes to the community, different businesses, whatever it may be. We bring the proposal to the council, you take a listen, and you make the best decision possible with the information that you have at hand. There's been a lot of people speaking tonight about the impact that it would have to their neighborhood, and I feel for those people, because I too moved to Bloomington because it is a crown jewel and because it has so many benefits. You know, I wanted to live somewhere where I had great access to the city, but in a quieter neighborhood where I could raise a family. And now I can't imagine if half of my neighborhood were eligible to become multi-unit homes. If my neighbors' homes were going to be torn down and developed into eleven potential units. It's a lot to cram into one small lot. As Councilmember Carter had pointed out earlier, we do have, in the current ordinance, availability for current lots to be changed into subsidies or to be developed with multi-units on them. And we haven't really utilized that. And I guess I would ask why? Is it truly because of the setbacks or the other stipulations that go along with the ordinance? Or is it because homeowners want to own a home? And that if there is a generational need, they do come to the council and request that a change be made? I think about who would truly benefit from a lot of these developments, and it's the developer. You don't see homeowners buying up lots in Bloomington or talking to their neighbors or deciding that they're going to take their home and and create a multi-unit home on their property. It's developers that come in and do that. So again, I guess my concern is that if we're really looking to benefit those in need of of housing, which we obviously have a great need for, maybe we need to be more thoughtful about how we go about doing that. Maybe this does require a little bit more time, a little bit more conversation and community outreach. To be honest, we had no idea that this was even being proposed. We found out because, being a part of the Save Penn Lake project with the eighty-sixth and Penn lot, that Mr. Furlong is attached to that project as well, someone reached out to us and and asked if we would be willing to support this cause. And and I do support this cause, because again, we want to think about what is the best solution for the community. So if the housing need is large, which it is, is one hundred to two hundred additional units over ten years the solution? That's only ten additional units a year. So I think that there's opportunity for us to take a step back, to think about how we create a better solution for those that are looking for homeownership. Excuse me. And if it's creating more affordable housing, could that be a part of the solution? I don't see any specifics around affordable housing in this rezoning ordinance. In fact, I'm seeing numbers go from point one minimum units to twelve, when the R-two zoning has a maximum of fifteen units. So it seems to me that there is a lack of low-density zoning ordinances in Bloomington. And there's opportunity for us to take a look at how we could create more so that there is additional opportunity for housing and meeting the housing needs in Bloomington. Again, I appreciate the time. The last thing that I'll say is, the community outreach, I think there's a lot of opportunity to get the community involved, just based on the the little outreach that was done, mostly through online platforms. You had a full house tonight. You had, the other room was full as well. I think that we have some opportunity to make sure that everyone is heard, whether it's for something or against something, I think all voices need to be heard. And using only electronic or digital outlets really isn't equitable to those who may not have access to internet computers, maybe don't have the skills to access those as well. When you were all campaigning, you went door-to-door. You had those conversations, you had those meetings with the community members. And I think that if we take the time to really do that, you'll be able to find a great solution through all of the great minds in Bloomington to how we fit the housing need and the zoning ordinance ordinances here. So again, thank you so much for your time. Appreciate all of your hard work, hard work.
Thank you. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Anthony Peters. I also live at Norman, on Norman Ridge. And I actually just have one question tonight. And that is, based on some of our conversations that we had, you know, in the same room a few months ago, there there seemed to be a little bit of an appetite and and kind of a question mark out there about our residential zoning just in general, and how that kind of compares to some of the commercial zoning. Someone had thrown some figures out there, I don't remember what they were, but there are a lot of different zoning pieces for commercial, and there are very few for residential. So kind of echoing out on some of my other neighbors and residents have been saying is that, you know, did, was there some sort of an evaluation or discussion on whether or not there should simply be more residential zoning zones for the city of Bloomington? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Folks, I don't want to cut anybody off, but unless we've got something brand-new to bring forward here.
Brand-new, I talked earlier.
Yes.
Mara Levandowski. Yes, I just want to ask, since this is a big deal, what brings it to the level of a city vote? What can be put as a proposal, not just in front of the council, but what brings it to the level of becoming something that all the people of Bloomington can cast their vote on?
Thank you. All right. Council, I think we've heard from everybody who's looking to speak. We've heard a lot of different voices. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing this evening on item four-point-three. Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember De La Sando to close the public hearing on item four-point-three. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven-zero, we've closed the public hearing. So I heard a handful of questions, and Council, fill me in here if I've missed any of these, but maybe staff could come up and we could just do a very quick run-through, because I think they are very easily answerable. There was a question about the specifics regarding the the multi-generational aspect of this, of this proposal. A specific question about the definition of affordable housing. The bus stops one, I think we can pretty much, we can, I could probably explain the bus stops issue to folks. This is, uh, bus stops are controlled by the the school board and and the schools. So we can, we can weigh in and ask, but ultimately, whatever they do on their bus stops, they do on their bus stops. So apologize for that, that that is not something that we have jurisdiction over. The question about whether or not it goes to a vote. Bloomington typically is not in, does not do initiative and referendum. And I don't even know if we have the ability to, within our city code or not, to put specific questions like this to to the vote of the of the city council. Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor and members, the city charter does provide for initiative, referendum, and reform in chapter five.
Thank you so very much. So it would be possible for something like this, that we could do that. And and I know there there are requirements within the city code about what that means in terms of how the initiative and referendum would would work. Gentlemen, are you set up here? So questions about the the multi-generational, multi-generational aspects, how this would perhaps benefit that. And then a couple of more, the the nuts and bolts thing. What is the definition of affordable housing? The the notion of the blanket change, why why it needs to be a blanket change? And then a question about the evaluation of the number of housing or residentially-related zoning districts. Go to it.
Sure. Yeah, Mayor Bussey, can you repeat the first question again?
Uh, the question about the, how this relates to multi-generational, the multi-generational aspect of this.
Sure. So a couple of key links. One is that by providing more opportunities for subdivision, there's more opportunities for housing. And with new housing, there's the ability to provide accessory dwelling units that could also occur with existing homes in Bloomington, which is a great way to provide multi-generational housing. The comprehensive plan amendment before you tonight directly links into that and helps to open the door for additional accessory dwelling units throughout the city. So those are real close tie-ins.
Thank you for that. I I see the the slide that you have up on our screens here, the the definition of affordable housing and how the, how area median income works in this.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Yes, thank you, I apologize for the interruption. I I understood the question from the, from the, the person a little differently than you interpreted it, and I just wanted to check on that, if that's okay, before we move on to affordable housing. From what I understood, the question was, what was the, how do you enforce it? So you build a multi-generational house, grandpa dies. Does that person have to leave the home because it was meant to be multi-generational and therefore it's enforced that way? That was the question that I understood, like, who's the one that determines that it's a multi-generational house and has to stay that way, for example?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember De La Sando, I think that those provisions relate specifically to the HRA project at Ninety-Thirty Park. So, and I don't think those, I could be wrong, but I don't know if all of the contractual agreements between those entities have completely been fleshed out. I know Erica Coleman is in the audience to provide specifics about that. But the ordinance itself, on a broader lens, would have, would have no restrictions on requiring a property to be maintained as multi-generational.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember De La Sando, council members. In particular, to Ninety-Thirty Park Avenue South, that is a project that is under a memorandum of understanding with West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust. Therefore, it is perpetual affordability. Therefore, if we go into into agreement with them to build on that lot as proposed, as the HRA would like to do, then it would be a single-family home with an ADU that has a requirement for multi-generational homeownership. Therefore, it would have to be sold to an income-qualified, multi-generational home buyer. If it is resold, it has to be resold to an income-qualified, multi-generational home buyer, that is through a ninety-nine-year lease on the land and a targeted at fifty percent AMI household.
May I ask a quick follow-up? Thank you, Ms. Coleman, appreciate that. Does the, the, that that doesn't mean that the person that, if they're there, but the multi-generational portion passes away, for example, they don't have to vacate the premise? Okay, great, thank you, thanks. Thank you for letting me interrupt.
And thank you for that clarification. The definition of affordable housing here in in the Twin Cities.
Yes, Mayor Bussey. So on the screen, we have the most recent Metropolitan Council definitions of affordable homeownership. And you can see the price levels at various income points. So AMI stands for area median income. And basically, you know, eighty percent of area median income, that translates into a house price of three-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars. And the way they figure that, you can see the assumptions on the side. You know, thirty-year loan. One thing I would highlight with these standards, at the beginning of twenty-twenty-two, interest rates, mortgage rates were at very different place than they are today. And you can see that they assumed a three percent mortgage rate. You cannot get that today. So in twenty-twenty-three, these price levels will drop quite a bit to be affordable because of the higher interest rate. So that's one thing I would highlight. But yeah, depending on the income level you're trying to hit to make it affordable, that's, these are the the price ranges.
Good, Mr. Johnson, okay, thank you. Council, any questions on that? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Not not just a question on this, but more of a statement that one of the other ways of looking at affordability is that simple thirty percent of the family's income. So, I mean, we look at this for the people that are most struggling, but, you know, affordability applies to anybody trying to own a home. Can they afford that home? And that thirty percent is a pretty common rule that people use, whether you're buying a million-dollar house, a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house, or you're at these levels of affordability.
Mayor, Mayor Bussey, if I may, the only thing I think I would add to that conversation is that I think some of the ways in which we talk about the zoning rules are a little bit mismatched with really the kind of end outcome, if you will. People are asking, how do zoning changes make affordable housing? Zoning are the preconditions by which housing can be developed. It doesn't specify who is going to develop that housing or who the end buyer of that housing is going to be, or the market conditions that exist when that housing is developed. The zoning is a precondition, or in some cases, a barrier to the development of the housing. So these are which, what we're talking about here is the minimum rules that establish of how housing can be developed, not you pull lever A and then result B happens. So I think sometimes it kind of just jumps that through line, and the city's not even control of a lot of these factors. There's kind of a multiple buckets here. So that's kind of my only comment about.
Thank you. And then the the two final questions, and then we can get on to the discussion.
Glenn wanted to say something, too.
Mayor Bussey, just one point to add in on the affordability. There are really two ways the ordinance addresses affordability. One is making it more feasible for our various partners and the Housing and Redevelopment Authority to accomplish their mission. We've heard from some affordable housing providers today, and to the extent that they can provide opportunities, that would be directly affordable. The second way the ordinance really addresses affordability is by potentially lowering the cost of any housing, no matter where it is on the price spectrum. The fact that if there's less land value that goes into that housing, that housing could be that much cheaper theoretically. So it has the ability, not just to generate true affordable housing, but to make any new housing cheaper.
Thank you on that. So the two last, little more nuts and bolts, kind of zoning questions. There was a question about the the notion of of a blanket change, and I think the question of how zoning is applied or or how it applies to specific properties as opposed to in general. And then the question of whether we had the discussion of evaluating the the different residential zoning districts we have in the in the community as opposed to the the number of industrial or business retail zoning districts we have in the community. of industrial or business retail zoning districts we have in the community.
Yeah, you want me to take a stab at the second? I'm going to start with this, Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll start with the second one. But the reason why there are so many industrial and commercial zoning districts is that each one of them have a very different palette of uses that are allowed and different intensity standards, and those serve different purposes. For example, if you had development along 494, you would want that development to be pretty intense and create a lot of jobs and add a lot of value. Those are very high, highly valuable sites. Whereas a site in, in maybe your James area industrial district, or Southwest Industrial District, or a commercial, just neighborhood retail, you're going to have much lower intensity standards for just neighborhood-oriented retail uses. So I, I fully empathize and understand that question, that makes a lot of sense. The reason why there are so many is because they have many different criteria and performance standards, in addition to our urban and mixed-use type zoning districts, which are also technically in many ways, commercial zoning districts. So they have very different standards because they have, they serve very different purposes. To the question earlier about why not have many different residential zoning districts, that is an approach that some cities do take. It does add a lot of regulatory complexity. There was a older era of time in Bloomington when there was a few more lower-density residential zoning districts. The city went away from that direction in favor of the current R1 zoning district. The one thing I would just note about that is that it would be a fairly intensive and effort to, to kind of recreate that wheel or go backwards in that respect. In addition to that, you would have to proactively rezone all of those properties that you're now applying these new zoning districts to. So that involves in a very extensive community engagement program, which we've heard about tonight, as well as a pretty robust public hearing process with hundreds and maybe thousands of mail notifications to do that.
Thank you. Counsel, did I miss any questions? Did anybody jot any down that I have, that I missed here? Very good.
Mayor, Mayor Bussey, I wrote, I wrote one down about the plan development, that that can be used as a tool. We do have a slide about that. I wouldn't make hay of it if we didn't have a slide about it. So why not just look at plan development as the tool to kind of reduce some of our standards? A couple of things I just want to point out about plan development is that it's a, a very high level, it's actually a rezoning action. So it significantly increases the fees and costs associated with doing that type of development. And the other thing about that is that, so there's a time component to that, too, say eight weeks or about two months to get an approval. But the other, and maybe the most important piece, is that it's very much more discretionary process on the part of the council. A property owner who wants to develop a site with a little bit lower lot sizes, they will have to have a public hearing, the neighbors will be notified, some neighbors might be in support of those changes, some might not be. But the point is, is that the rezoning action is at the highest point of the pyramid of discretion for city councils. So it does make it subject to more discretion as opposed to a by right action. I just want to point that out.
Thank you. Did I miss any other questions?
There, there was, thank you, Mayor Bussey, there was one other point about consistency with the comprehensive plan, and I feel like sometimes, and I don't, I can't put this up on the screen, I'm sorry, I should have added as a slide, but sometimes our housing element in the comprehensive plan is also forgotten about, that that's an important part of the comprehensive plan. And I'll just read goal two in the housing element, provide a range of housing choices to promote development of a mix of housing types. The actions associated with that, the sec, I won't read the first one, I'll read the second one. Consider amendments to official controls and development standards to promote a variety of housing types to meet evolving market demands and reduce barriers to creation of non-traditional housing types. Example, accessory dwelling units, smaller lots and/or unit sizes. This action fits that action in your comprehensive plan to a T. So as often the case, in a very large, broad guiding document of a community, it is not uncommon to have some of your goals, visions and actions appear to be in conflict with one another. But I just want to point this piece of the comprehensive plan out as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
I just had a clarifying question. So for plan development considerations, who sets the fees and these requirements?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Carter, it's in the city code.
Okay.
It's a application piece.
Just wanted to have that set out loud, thank you.
All right. Thank you, don't go far. I'm sure we'll have additional questions as, as we get into this here. Counsel, thoughts on this? Where do we start? Where, where do we begin this discussion? We've had a number of, well, it's our second public hearing on this, we've got a, a ream of documents, we've had probably the most vigorous staff presentation on a code amendment that we've, we've ever had, I think, a planning, a zoning amendment that we've ever had. So just looking for, for thoughts and where we start a discussion. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll, I'll try and keep this concise here, I've been chewing on this for, obviously since our last conversation about it. But as, as my brain's kind of been wrapped around this, these changes would be disruptive, but they're also only going to produce 100 houses in 10 years. So how do we square that circle of this, this plan is too aggressive, but also doesn't go far enough? And I think some reframing that I've tried to do in my own head has been kind of clarifying. And I'm glad many of the speakers here tonight, my fellow council colleagues, when you get headlines, I looked at the last few months of headlines, looking for an affordable home in the Twin Cities, good luck. The number of Minnesota home sales are at an eight-year low, but prices are at a new high. Home sales fall in the area, but prices keep rising. I'm glad we're hearing a recognition that affordable housing is at crisis levels, especially for owner occupied, especially when we've got a record number of seniors looking to downsize with scarce options, we've heard from folks tonight, when the school district, year after year, is asking for our help in attracting new families after seven and 10 years of flat or declining enrollment, when we're making historic investments to hire new cops and firefighters, and those first-year cops and firefighters can't afford a house in Bloomington. So I, I think on the one hand, we, we have committed aggressively in my time on council to addressing the affordability challenges of the community. But after a lot of requests for how do we get the tools to include the owner occupied side, the rubber is just frankly finally meeting the road after years of us asking for those tools. And the answer is clear, it, it's just as simple as allow more houses. And our neighboring communities have recognized this, as has been mentioned, Richfield, Roseville, Hopkins, Rochester, they're not getting out of the way of new housing just out of goodness of their hearts, it's because while some cities will fall behind, hemming and hawing on a decision that is going to be inevitable in the growth of the Twin Cities region, cities that are proactive enough to throw a lasso around that change are going to eat the rest of our lunch. It's as simple as that. And this isn't about the two houses being proposed off Park Avenue, it's not about the 100 to 200 homes over the next 10 years, it's about as, as a policy planning body that's supposed to look generationally at the future of the community, it's what our fabric looks like, that generation from now. In 19, between 1970 today, the population of the Twin Cities region has almost doubled. That is explosive growth. And where is it going to be a generation in the future when the desert southwest is dry as a bone, when Florida's halfway underwater, and when Minnesota is one of the only reliable places to have access to clean drinking water, a decent climate, and a great place to raise your family? I don't think we can necessarily rely on the assumptions about what the housing market and the Twin Cities market looks like today when we're planning on a 50, 60, 70-year timeline. And Paul, this, this kind of gets to the, the nut of it, I appreciate you putting up with me. It really gets to, to what I think is the most foundational challenge we faced as a community. In, in my time here, and from what I've, I've heard from some very longtime residents, a generation ago, a company spent a lot of money and a lot of effort to convince the region that West Bloomington was our prestigious half. And we're all, we're all aware of that marketing campaign, it's, we, we all roll our eyes when we hear it. But 50 years later, it wasn't the marketing campaign that caused huge income discrepancies between East and West Bloomington. And it wasn't the marketing campaign that caused a measurable life expectancy difference between East and West Bloomington. It's because the city, through zoning, decided that West Bloomington was going to be a functionally different city, and that the small homes on small lots weren't something we were going to include throughout this community. They were, they were something that were going to get kept up, or they were put down, and that's where they're going to get left for generations. And I think about, as I'm out knocking on doors, as I'm out talking to neighbors, and I'm trying to explain if, if something like this weren't to move forward, and you say, well, a lot of folks were concerned that letting your small house on your small lot into the rest of our town would lead to parking nightmares. And the person you're talking to at the door says, I park in the driveway, I follow parking requirements, I look around in, in my east side neighborhoods, and their functions, they're not parking nightmares with stuff all over the front yards. And if that were the case, the, the answer isn't to ban these houses, it's to step up our enforcement. You could say, well, letting your house into the rest of our community would make the roads hazardous for pedestrians. And again, the answer isn't to ban this housing, it's to invest in pedestrian infrastructure. There's no reason Norman Ridge should be as dangerous as it is today. That's already a problem that should have been fixed a while ago. And, and just overall, just kind of fundamentally, these properties have changed the character of the neighborhood. Well, it, it's recognizing with a vote to what we've already said, that neighborhoods with diverse characteristics are stronger in the long run for the fabric of the community. So I, to wrap it up, the residents of Bloomington handed us an aggressive strategic plan to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. But I think more important, importantly, they acknowledged that transformation's going to come through collective courage and willingness to take risks. We passed it unanimously, we, we went and bragged all over the Twin Cities, look how aggressive our strategic plan is. And even more importantly than that, they told us we can't allow past practices to interfere with the consideration of new ideas. And for 50 years, we have codified an East versus West Bloomington in our zoning code, and then been surprised when year after year surveys say, this feels like two cities. So in the long term, I think we need the housing regardless, I think we should be proactive about it. But in the short term, I think this is probably the single most obvious example of East versus West Bloomington written into law I've ever seen, and we've got a generational opportunity to actually do something about it.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Lohman and Councilmember DeSandro. Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you asked the question, what, what do you think we ought to do? Certainly appreciate the, the comments from my, my colleague, Mr. Martin, and we will get to that. But I think one of the things that, reason why we delayed this was we had concerns from residents. Those residents put together a, they went, they consulted with a lawyer, and they brought forth a proposal, and I, my understanding is that they have a petition of 60-plus odd folks that support that, that petition and that, that particular proposal that we saw before us. And I wonder if it makes some sense to comment on that with respect to what's been put forward to us. I certainly have opinions about, I'd like to talk about, but I think that we did delay this for a reason. And I do think it makes some sense to have some comment and, and commentary as to the things that they're putting forward, as to whether or not this body would in any part want to consider any of the proposals that they have put, pulled forward. So that, that's what I would say to you, Mayor. That, that's my question where I want to start before I kind of make comments.
I, I think, thank you, Councilmember. I think it, it's a worthwhile conversation to have to start, but I would be very hesitant to kind of amend things on the fly based on legal recommendations from, from outside council, and without having it fully vetted and fully discussed. I, I could see if, if it seemed to make more sense to go that direction, I would recommend that we vote this down and we start the process again, trying to, to put, put that together in some way, shape or form. But I, and I'd be happy to have that, start the conversation, but what I don't want to do is start tacking things onto this without really having a full vetting and a full conversation about what, what any of those.
You know, Mayor, I think that's fair. I just want to see, because I think, I think, I think it behooves us to get that out of the way and then kind of move to the next, next piece. So I, what I would ask is, is there anybody else that's on this council that wants to have a look at that and consider, you know, what, what that means? I just wanted, because if there isn't anybody, then we can kind of move right, straight to the, to the original proposal. But since we did hold it off, I, I want to at least consider that, so.
Councilmember Moore?
I'd like to make a comment about that. I think it's a, it's great that the Norman Ridge neighborhood is able to band together and seek private counsel. And I have an issue with a comment that Mr. Schilling made regarding the number of responses to the, this proposal. To me, silence does not mean that they're agreeing or consenting to the decision that the Norman Ridge neighborhood has come to us with. My neighborhood, I know, cannot go and hire an outside attorney to come and represent us and, and push our thoughts on a particular proposal. I know dozens of other neighborhoods who cannot do that either, and that does not mean they disagree with what has been brought forward or agree with that. But I think adopting something that a neighborhood has brought forward to impact the whole city is not considerate of the city, is not considerate of the other residents who cannot afford this opportunity, and so I would not be supportive of bringing or considering those other proposals in this manner, how it is.
Thank you, Councilmember. Others, do we want to, do we want to take this up, or, I mean, given the hour and given the, the decision in front of us here this evening, do we want to take this up, or do we want to just focus, focus on the, the proposal in front of us here this evening?
Yeah.
Councilmember Carter? Or I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember DeSandro?
There, my only comment, Mr. Mayor, is that there were several things between January 9th and today that are in this plan, not just the note from outside council, there are lots of things in here that are new. We'd have to go through all of them if we were going to go through one of them, in my opinion, which we might do in our comments anyway, but, but I, you know, I, I don't want to single one of them out, considering we have several. For example, all of the natural resources information that, you know, that was brought forth as a result, we should talk about that or we shouldn't talk about that, but the point is, that's just as legitimate as a letter from outside council, in my opinion, in terms of making alterations.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to say something similar, I, I feel like there are multiple things that we could discuss in the plan that are directly related to some of the things in the proposed letter, so I don't really see them, I don't see as separate conversations.
So, Councilmember, what I'm, what I'm hearing is that perhaps if, if we want to, if we're, if we don't like what we're looking at tonight to vote it down, and perhaps then if we restart the conversation to incorporate whether it's environmental or some of the things proposed by outside council.
And I just want to, want to clarify that my understanding is, is that the petition was 60 folks, so it's not just one kind of item. It was, these folks are supporting this, this particular letter. But it sounds like to me that what we have before us is what we want to kind of go through, and I'm good with that, I'm fine with that, if that's what we want to do, but I, given that we have the neighborhood bring that forward, I want to be mindful of that, and it doesn't sound like we're, we shouldn't go that route, and I'm, I'm happy to have that conversation, I'm willing to wait a little bit more before I make some comments, so.
Sounds good. So with that in mind, counsel, additional comments, questions, thoughts on Councilmember DeSandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, I have complex emotions about this thing, to be honest, than I did the last time that I was having this conversation, and I have a lot of respect for my colleague, Councilmember Martin, because I know he and I come from very similar backgrounds, and we, our lives, our life experiences are very similar. Single-family divorced parents, you know, lived in a row house, I mean, I get it and I understand. First one to graduate from college, so I understand that. I, here's where I'm at, I'm for many of the, the changes that are in here, like I love the get rid of the minimum size requirements, like let's just let that be a thing, I'm fine with getting rid of parking, and like, there are lots of things in here. I don't understand why we're doing the single, the single lot subdivision, it's the thing that I'm hung up on, and I'll just be very candid. And so if we could get rid of that and vote for everything else, I'd be here, like I'd be ready to go. And here's the reason why. I can't figure out how this makes affordable housing. I just can't. I do the math that we saw with 3%, I do the math and I go to a Google calculator and I come up with a mortgage number, and I know people who make that num, that money can't make that number. And that was to Councilmember Nelson's point about 30% of your income, more than 30% of your income shouldn't go to your housing, right? So the, given that we have so much opportunity in the two-family space, even if we did nothing tonight, I'm not, I'm confused as to why that's not what we're focused on. And I'm confused by why we don't have our, our HRA and our partners and everything else like looking at these lots, because that lot at 9030 could be a twin home today. It could, they don't need us to change anything today to get a twin home. And frankly, it could have been built by now. I mean, let's be honest, right? And at $300 a square foot, building a duplex seems to be more cost-effective in my mind. No parking, a single garage, I was in New Orleans this, this weekend, and I took a picture, and I happened to show this to Councilmember Martin, there's a picture, you know, you, you have the garages underneath and the house on top, and it's sitting nicely in a lot, right? Beautiful home, probably more expensive than anyone we're talking about here, because it's in New Orleans. But, but my point is, that could be built on 9030 Park today, and we didn't have to do a thing here tonight to get that done. And so I'm not, I'm confused by why we are making, for, for lack of a better way to put it, this one-size-fits-all thing. We also know that condo building is just at a standstill here, but... We also know that condo building is just at a standstill here, but my first home in Minnesota when I moved here was a condo. The first home I ever bought in San Francisco was a condo, right? I lived in 900 square feet in a condo in San Francisco. So, like, I, you think about all the people we know who are seniors, who live in the beautiful 55-plus, like, condo buildings over by Wood Lake Nature Center in Richfield, and we can't get one of those built here. This seems like the problems we should be working on, frankly. And I, that's why I'm struggling, but if you want to reduce parking requirements and you want to reduce, like, the lot, like, the size of the house that it can be on, like, all of those things, I'm 100% here for. This list of summary of key changes, I think 92% of them, I'm here for. And I'm just wondering if that's an option for us at all tonight, is to, like, go through, I hate to call it a line item veto, but like, go through line by line, pick the ones we're all willing to do, get that done, and then suffer, like, struggle with the other ones. And I don't know if that's an option, but if it was, I'd love to talk about it, because I think it would get us very far along the way, including in Norman Ridge, by the way, where I think 75% of the lots, or 72% of the lots are eligible to be reconstructed as two-family lots, right now, without us doing anything to the zone. So if we, if we really do want to, like, pick on West Bloomington or whatever, there's opportunity right now in front of us, go for it, developers, you know, let's do it, because it's right there in front of us today, and it would make a difference. It would, and it would solve the infill problem. So, that's where I'm at. I don't know if that's helpful in terms of moving things along, but I'd be up for looking at that list. Thanks.
I think, helpful comments. Thank you, Councilmember DeLisandro. Appreciate that. I'm not sure I would, I would look for guidance as to what the best path, in terms of what Councilmember DeLisandro just talked through there, what would the best path be if we, I can't imagine a line item, as we sit here between now and 11 o'clock, to try and figure that out, would be the most prudent thing to do.
Mayor members, we did discuss the possibility of this conversation last Friday amongst staff, and it would be our recommendation that if you, you know, you closed a public hearing, that would have been part of our recommendation, and if you have very specific edits that you want to direct us to undertake, we would prefer to come back with a clean document for you to adopt. One thing that we talked about are sort of, you know, the challenge with cross-references and tweaking one spot, and it unintentionally impacts another spot, and we're working on the fly. The other thing that I'll add, when bringing back a clean document, is that there's a very clear understanding by everybody who's taking action, what is being acted on. So if we were able to come back with a clean document after receiving clear direction from staff, I think it would be in everyone's best interest to go that way.
Thank you, Ms. Mandreschad, and I think, just the way I'm interpreting this conversation, a clean document would take at least one more conversation. It would take more than the hour that we have left here this evening. It would take a lengthy study session, basically, to ponder way through that.
Mayor members, that's certainly at your discretion as how you want to handle that. It would need to be an open meeting, and it would need to be specific, and, you know, staff is definitely here to support that effort. If we could get some sense of where the conversation might be headed, slides could be prepared, options could be drafted, that sort of thing. In the past, you know, we've done a sort of an option B, option A kind of approach.
Council additional comments? Councilmember Lohman?
Well, Mayor, you know, certainly if folks were interested in going down that route, you know, I'd certainly be willing to provide a second for that. You know, otherwise, you know, I think I'm ready to make the motion here. So I think we've got to kind of, kind of move this thing, so. So if I think if we want to go down that route, and we want to go line by line, I'm more than happy to do that. I think we all have folks, but there isn't support to do that, then I'm ready to make the motion, let's move on.
Hold on to that thought. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I would be in support of what Councilmember DeLisandro said, even her recommendation of, you know, passing most of this, with the exception of the minimum site size for the single family. I think one thing that has, I think most people, well, I shouldn't assume most people know, but when I ran for city council, one of the big reasons I ran was because of affordable housing. I sat on the VEP board, we heard from our clients every day, that the cost of housing was driving food insecurity in families across Bloomington, right? At that time, we had 280 homeless students in the Bloomington Public Schools, we have 300 now, and that's an underestimate, right? I feel very passionately about creating more affordable housing options for people across our community, and what brings me great, I mean, what I feel so good about tonight is actually, I feel like most people in this room believe that that's important. So that is good, and that's a win. I also, though, have had a really hard time understanding how making this change is going to get us to affordability. And when we did, I appreciated one of the testifiers talking about how we define success in the plan, and really it was around increasing the supply of owner-occupied. But we didn't talk anything about affordability, we didn't really define what equitable development looks like, and in my research prior to the meeting and reading through different documents from different organizations, one of the biggest challenges to infill are the economic factors. And I feel like there are so many things that we could be doing as a city to address the economic pieces. I think this is a start, for sure, getting rid of all of these regulations that make it really challenging and add costs to projects. But, I mean, are there other things that we could be looking at? Waiving fees, looking at different standards for the plan development considerations? Are there, could we use TIF in some way? Could we define specific areas for infill development? I mean, the EPA talks about infill development as being a really critical tool, right, in revitalizing neighborhoods and improving environmental sustainability, but they also talk about defining specific areas. And so, I am, I'm very open to what Councilmember DeLisandro proposed in terms of, I don't have issues. I would say I kind of, I do kind of feel like removing the city council review raises a little bit of a red flag, but if nobody else really feels that way, I'd be fine to move that through tonight. But otherwise, I do, I do think that we need to kind of take a step back on the minimum site size, just because I don't, for the single family, I should be clear, just because I have concerns about truly what is the impact of that. And I don't, and I can't make the math work either to get to affordability, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I will say, I tend to agree, I don't know that what we have in front of us tonight does what we hope it's going to do. I think there, it still needs work, there still needs conversation. I firmly do believe that, I mean, your point, Councilmember DeLisandro, the, if the market wanted those multifamilies, those duplexes in half of our city, all the places that they could be, they would be there by now, and the market hasn't decided that yet, and hasn't pushed that yet. And to look at some of the most, some of the ripest areas for lot splits that would end up with, with a number of different housing options on it, they're in large lots area, large lot areas, which are generally higher-income areas, which means they're going to be, when they split those lots, they're going to put higher-income houses on there, so higher-priced houses. So I don't know that it meets our affordability desires, our affordability goals right now. I'm intrigued by the notion of having this conversation, this line by line, to try and really think through this, because as we heard a couple of times tonight, we kind of get one shot at this, although I don't completely agree with this, but I would like, if we're going to do this, let's do this with, do this right. I can feel the daggers that staff is shooting at me right now, because we have been working on this for a while and looking at this, but if we're going to do it, I think it would be, it is worthwhile to do it right. And I appreciate the suggestion to work off of a clean sheet, so considering all the cross-references that are going on and everything else that it might be. And so I appreciate the thought, you know, we could just maybe strike some things out and try and move forward. I would feel a lot more comfortable if we just continued this discussion, this conversation, based on what we heard, based on the conversation we're having here, based on how we can make it, as we see it, to be the most effective and most worthwhile and usable piece of ordinance that accomplishes what we want it to accomplish, really. Councilmember Muah?
If we, if we decided to do that, would this be an opportunity to add additional things? Because in my opinion, the proposal today is not nearly as aggressive as I would like to see it. 100 to 200 in 10 years is not enough to do that, and so I would want to add additional items to this proposal. If we were going to go through a line item and cut things, I would want to be able to add things.
Well, I think it's all part of the conversation. I mean, you could certainly bring that up. It's, we'd have to come to consensus as a council as to whether or not we'd, what we'd put in, what we'd take out, and how it would look in the end, and other things we can consider as we move through this. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to Councilmember Muah's point, I think I would like to see a more aggressive approach on the two-family situation, to your point a minute ago. It hasn't happened by virtue of the normal economic conditions, but if we, as a council member incentivized it, could we move that needle? I think that that's very interesting. You know, everywhere in my patch, there are duplexes, and they fit really well into neighborhood aesthetics, and, you know, they don't, and if I heard correctly from the planning team tonight, 70% of them are owner-occupied. So we could also add on to that, making sure that we maintain a certain owner-occupied, limit the number of rentals that could happen, and we could do a lot of things to really stimulate owner-occupied, you know, duplexes or even triplexes, but let me not get ahead of myself. But what I don't, if we're not going to be able to get condos done, then this seems like the less, like, the fastest next decision point we could make. And there's a lot of incentivize we can, we can do, both through HRA as well as in the market, if we tried hard enough, in my opinion.
Agreed. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Appreciate the conversation this evening. I do want to acknowledge the work that Mr. Mark Guard and Mr. Johnson and other staff have done. It's, as the mayor said, this is probably the most vigorous, thorough analysis of any code amendment that we've had, at least in the time that I've been here. You know, and I think it's also good if not all of the history on our efforts here to come through have been conveyed, that we talk a little bit about that, because this council and your preceding councils made a determination that tackling this issue of making housing that's affordable in Bloomington a top priority. And we focused primarily on rental communities in the first couple of years that we were working on that, five, six, seven years ago. And there was a recognition in about 2019 that there needed to be similar efforts on the homeownership side as well. And I think the biggest recognition in all of this is that creating the conditions for housing affordability, and especially in the homeownership sphere, is, is going to take a whole lot of different tools and approaches, and as was identified in the presentation, the biggest barrier is zoning, right, on the homeownership side. And so I appreciate the ideas that have been put forward. When we start talking about how to incentivize duplexes, or even triplexes, or other forms that would be permissible today, I think most often, the way that that's going to happen is through financial incentives. One of the things that we're trying to do by reducing barriers through zoning flexibility is that it lessens the burden on the local government to provide financial incentives. As I've heard this council talk about that over the last couple of years, is we don't always want to have to be incentivizing through precious city dollars, housing that's affordable. We want to be creating a whole system and ecosystem that's going to support it. And so the proposals that are in front of the council are the way to actually lessen the burden around financial incentives that are going to make that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Please.
Thank you. Mr. Verbrugge, can you explain how? Because I can't understand it, so I'm curious, because what I keep hearing is that the things, the reasons why these things are not happening are economic. So unless you are levering, levering, you know, leveraging, what's the right word? Moving the levers of economics, how are you doing that? How does taking an 11,000-square-foot house and making it possible, or taking in a 15,000-square-foot lot and making it subdivisible or whatever, how's that do that? Like, help me understand, that's so abstract to me, and I'm not trying to challenge you, I just don't think that the average person can wrap their head around that, like, what you're talking about.
I can take a swing at that, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember DeLisandro, but I have staff colleagues who are actually more adept at taking a swing at that. Here's what I would say initially, is that the comments that were made earlier about the market hasn't responded yet, is because the, I think the market hasn't recognized the opportunity either. As we start talking about creating opportunities for people to access homeownership, I think the message has not been conveyed that the opportunity to provide that type of housing is available. And so I don't think the markets had a mature opportunity to respond, right? So that's the first thing. The second is, I think that it is a financial issue, right? It's going to come down to a developer's performance, it's going to come down to land cost and what they can build for, and those are all real issues. And I think that over time, those things are going to work out so that the market will figure out how to do that, because markets usually do, right? They may come to us, but I think more likely than not is that they will find ways to get it done without the local government assistance, especially if we say that we're going to focus the financials in other places, and continue our focus on especially the multifamily development.
Councilmember Lohman and Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Lohman?
Just real three quick things here. I just wanted to just thank Patrick Martin for your statements. I really appreciate that. Growing up on the east side, I do really appreciate those comments. Next, moving to city manager, your comments, I appreciate your comments, and I think I have a much clearer understanding of what staff is trying to do. I've struggled abstractly with what we're trying to do, and the thing that comes to mind, you know, because I know we've talked about this many a times, many councils back, you know, for example, we talk about the loan program, you know, that loan program's a great example of utilizing tax dollars, resources, and that was an example of how we, you know, took those funds and were able to utilize those funds continuously over and over and over again, in a sense, in ecosystem. And so we were able to have those loans, and if that is what, what staff is proposing with this, is trying to accomplish that, I didn't see it here. But that is, that was what I was hoping to see with the, with that program. If that's what we're trying to do, yeah, I'm certainly supportive of that, because that's the thing, I have the greatest fear, is over time, that we will not be able to support that affordable housing that we have on the rental side, long-term, that we would not be able to provide that opportunity. And then finally, Mayor, we are getting late at the time, and so if there's a time to make a motion to figure out where we're going to move next, I'd like to move us in that direction. I don't want to stop any other councilmember that wants to talk, but I think it's time to.
I'm going to recognize Councilmember Nelson, and then if you would be so inclined to make a motion, you can go that direction. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to expound on what the city manager was saying in regards to Councilmember DeLisandro's point, and try to explain the math a little bit better. What it does is it creates vacant lots. Right now, the reason it doesn't work economically to do duplexes is because it makes no sense to tear down a house that has existing value. You can't start with $350,000 lot cost and try to build something in east Bloomington. What are you going to build? Even if you tried to build two houses at $350,000, it doesn't work. The math doesn't work. So if you subdivide the lots, and you can parcel off, I think Mr. Johnson explained it, if you can parcel off a vacant portion of that, then your lot costs drop dramatically, and now you can get an additional unit there. That's how you create affordable units. They're not going to be in Norman Ridge. No person in their right mind is going to build a $300,000 house in Norman Ridge. It's a beautiful neighborhood, and the thing about it is, it's beautiful because of all the features that people have talked about, the streams, the wildlife, the trees, it is fantastic. And you know what, who's going to be attracted to that? People with the means to buy there. There's a reason why it costs a lot of money to live on Lake Minnetonka. I mean, take it to an extreme, you know? I'm not going to live on Lake Minnetonka. I can't afford that. But people that can afford that do that, people that can afford to live in Norman Ridge, because it's an awesome area, that's where they're going to live. But, but to the point, that's how you get there, and that's why we haven't seen this rush of duplexes. There may be, people don't understand it, but there is not economic value in tearing down a really good existing house. There may be some vacant lots, there may be some houses that have a ton of deferred maintenance, that would be candidates for that, that you could get for a price point that you could do it at, but we heard the one in Norman But we heard the, the one in Norman Ridge that had been considered and the neighborhood came and I, it's my understanding from what I heard tonight that that is not under consideration. But they were taking that and I think that from what my, I understood, it was a subdivided and it was still well over a million dollars of new housing being built there. You're, you're right, that's not where the affordable construction is going to go. But there are places that it would. And that, and that, I'm trying to explain the math there of why, why that subdivision, why those, uh, lot sizes could impact the market and provide affordability because it reduces that lot cost significantly, uh, for a project.
Councilmember DeLisandro, very quickly, and then, um...
Yes, just wanted to say thank you. I, that makes sense to me. What I don't understand is, I don't think that the map that we saw in our packet shows specifically the ones that would be candidates like you described, where the house is off to one side and the other portion could be taken on. So from my perspective, I only had to work with was teardowns. But I did hear something tonight, it was the first time I heard it, which is that, that some of the things we're trying to do here would, um, would allow people who want to put in a second story on their existing house or want to add an ADU to the top of their house or whatever, that, that we are, there are barriers to being able to do that here. And my understanding is those things are less costly. Um, you know, it's like 300 square foot, $300 a square foot for the first, like, floor, 150 for the second. So, so I'm all for, again, looking at the things that will enable that. And if we do have some people on deck who want to do that, I think we should work to make sure that that's doable as well. So appreciate that. But if, hey, if we happen to know how many of our properties sit on one side where they're subdividing doesn't, doesn't include a teardown, I'd be very interested in that information as well. Thanks.
Councilmember Lohman?
All right, Mayor, let me try a stab at this, uh, motion here. I'll move to postpone case PL, uh, 2022 dash 2021, uh, for additional study and consideration line by line on a date certain determined by staff.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lohman, a second by Councilmember DeLisandro for the motion as stated. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Lohman is the maker of the motion. I would just ask for a little bit of clarification. Uh, do you want to bring it back just for a fulsome discussion with the council where the council is identifying those? Or is there a direction to staff on issues that you'd like us to research in advance of that conversation?
Councilmember Lohman?
I, I look to my second here.
If the question is, do you want me to tell you, like, which of the lines that I was interested in? Or I don't know what the question is, I apologize. Do, um, I mean, I think that we're just talking about, and I don't know if, if Councilmember Muwa, because he asked for some particular things to potentially add, he may have some things, but I'm, I'm just suggesting that we, um, maybe we each bring our points of view on this. I thought the nice table of key changes was really helpful for me to just get a good summary. And that's what I kind of use to say, you know, yes, yes, no, no, whatever. Um, so if that worked for people, we could just bring all of our worksheets back and munch them or however you want to do that.
Thank you, uh, councilmembers and, and Mayor.
Sorry.
That's all I'm looking for is what additional information do you need from staff to have that conversation? Or do you feel that you have the information now and you just want more time to spend walking through the different options that might be available?
Thank you for that clarification. I just want to, I do want to make sure, because I, I am total agreement with, 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 uh, Councilmember Muwa. Um, that, that's part of my problem with this, this piece. So I want to be sure that that's able to get included, uh, with that, uh, so that can be worked into that list. So I'm not sure how that happens, Mayor and Manager, if that can be, that, that piece can be added.
It, it, I believe it could be added to the conversation. And I, I, I think that what we're bringing back or what we're directing staff to do is bring back the, the framework, but we can, that framework could certainly include additional things if we needed it to. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say, I think it's two different conversations. I think it's going through each of these, but then I think it's just the desire to have a broader conversation around what are the other levers that we're going to pull to be more aggressive to increasing access and opportunity for affordable homeownership. Is that fair?
Yeah, and that's exactly what it is. I don't think this should be the last conversation. We need to have more robust conversation, how we build on top of that.
Thank you. And I, I would also offer Mayor and councilmembers too, that, uh, if, if this motion prevails and, and that's what we do, that you can certainly forward ideas to me and we'll, we'll just, uh, accumulate that for staff and, and we'll, in order to prepare for the next conversation.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter, we got a motion and a second. Councilmember Carter?
Um, yeah, just one quick comment, and I guess I could have saved it after we voted, but, um, I also really want to thank staff. I know this has been a tremendous amount of work. Um, I feel kind of bad. This is overdone, but at the same time, I, I know it's the right thing to do and I want to thank all of the residents who have engaged throughout the process. Um, one of the comments that was made tonight, I do agree, um, you know, if you go to our website, it's not, and other than Let's Talk Bloomington, there's really not a lot on the website about what's going on, these changes. And so I think if we could have a webpage that is easily accessible, because if you don't have an account to sign into Let's Talk Bloomington, you can't see, like, I had a hard time sending the FAQ to people. It was easier once the packet came out and then I could say, go to page 350 in the council packet. Um, and so, uh, I do think just making the information more clear on the website and then, you know, if there's room in a Let's Talk Bloomington, just about in general, what are we doing to increase affordable homeownership opportunities and, you know, get that conversation going throughout the community, I think would be, um, good. Just, um, you know, again, I had my own troubles trying to find the information on the website, getting ready for this meeting, and so wanted to thank the person who brought that up.
Thank you, councilmember. We got a motion by Councilmember Lohman, a second by Councilmember DeLisandro to, what was the verb you used? Postpone.
Yeah, postpone, yep.
And, uh, directed staff regarding, uh, the conversation that will take place once we, once we, uh, get to the date certain, and I don't think we said a date certain, uh, date to be determined?
Yeah, left it, left it open because I think staff needs to figure out what, what makes sense.
Good enough.
And just to be clear, Mr. Mayor, if I may, and councilmembers, and just for the audience too, um, we'll, we'll just go back and look at what we have for our future agendas here and figure out, um, best timing. If it's the next meeting or, you know, what we need to do to accommodate it, we certainly don't want this to languish, so, uh, we'll bring it back as, as quickly as we can.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Motion and a second, no further discussion on this. Council, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries six, one with Martin opposing. So, thank you much. Uh, and yes, I, I would echo Councilmember Carter's statements to staff. Thank you for the work on this. It just feels as though it's not quite to where we, we want it and, and where it needs to be in terms of what Bloomington is looking for. So, uh, appreciate your continued work on this. To the residents, thank you for the, thanks for the conversation tonight. Thanks for the discussion. Thanks for keeping it nice and civil. Uh, usually when the council chambers is this full, it's not this nice and civil. So thank you for that. Uh, it's, it's appreciated and thank you for the, uh, the feedback. And we'll continue this conversation and, and, um, as, as we've been saying, to, we, we're going to get to a spot where this is right for Bloomington and we're, we're comfortable with it and we can move forward, uh, I think with, with everybody in agreement, we can make this work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your time. No more.
Onto our agenda, council, where we've got 33 minutes left here. Um, and I'm guessing we're going to end up pushing a couple of items off or at least one, I don't know. But let's see if we can get our work done here. Item 4.1, I will call this, this is a, uh, item 4.1, this is another public hearing for us. Uh, it's an ordinance amending chapter one of the city code related to enforcement of ordinances and laws and a variety of other things. Uh, we have, uh, Fire Chief Uli Seal and our deputy city attorney, Peter Zuniga, are going to lead us through this. Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for staying with us this late.
No problem. My intent is to lead very quickly.
That's what firefighters do, right?
These changes are proposed to chapters six and seven in the city code reflect changes to the Minnesota State Fire Code, the Minnesota Emergency Management Act, and changes in fire department operations. The changes accomplish four things. They delete sections of the city code that are out of date, align the city code with requirements of the Minnesota statutes, delete sections of the city code that are no longer applicable to current operations, and simplifies the city code and creates consistency within the city code. Proposed changes to chapter one and appendix A are really done to update the city code references to reflect the changes to chapter six and seven. The proposed changes also reflect a small increase in fire department permit fees. That's a summary and I'm ready to stand for questions, if you have any.
Council, questions of the chief? I hear no questions coming from council. And with that, I will open the public hearing. This is a public hearing on item 4.1 on our agenda this evening. It's a public hearing on an ordinance amending chapter one of the city code related to enforcement of ordinances, laws, chapter six of the city code related to public safety, chapter seven of the city code related to the emergency planning and operations, and appendix A of the city code related to administrative relief and fee structure. Is there anyone in the city council chambers who wishes to speak to item 4.1 tonight? Seeing no one coming forward, Mr. Sable? Anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, no one on the phone.
Council, no one in the, in the chambers coming forward, no one on the phone wishing to speak to item 4.1? I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.1.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Nelson to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero with Councilmember Lohman stepping away. Council, any questions or questions or comments on item 4.1? Councilmember DeLisandro?
Really, really quickly, I, this was, um, it seems to me that this just is like an update on our end to follow the state rules. Is that essentially the way to interpret it?
Essentially, both of those, um, sections of the code were very outdated and had references to things that, um, would have made sense in the 50s and early 60s.
Understood. Was the, um, was the, uh, was the code, Mr. Mayor, um, uh, updated recently by the state? It seemed like there was some new language in there that might have come in the last year or so, and I was just curious.
Chief Seal?
So the state fire code gets adopted by the state every few years. So that is, the reference you're probably referring to is the update, recent updates to Minnesota State Fire Code. So we tried to genericize the language in this code update so that ongoing, um, updates become easier.
Very good. Very good. Um, well, I'm happy to make the motion if we don't...
Councilmember DeLisandro?
All right. I move to adopt an ordinance amending chapter one of the city code related to enforcement of ordinances and laws, chapter six of the city code related to public safety, chapter seven of the city code related to emergency planning and operations, and appendix A of the city code related to administrative relief and fee schedule.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Carter to adopt the ordinance as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Councilmember DeLisandro, summary publication.
Let's do it. Uh, I motion to adopt a resolution directing summary publication of all of that, uh, an ordinance amending chapter one, chapter six, chapter seven, and appendix A. How about that? Fair enough? Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Lohman for summary publication on item 4.1. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Well done, thank you. Item 4.2 on our agenda is, uh, our final public hearing of the evening, and this is regarding the Luther Hyundai expansion rezoning, uh, the PDP, the FDP at 4801 American Boulevard West. Mr. Centenario, thanks for speaking with us this evening. Good evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think the last public hearing on your agenda tonight is what I believe infinitely less complicated than residential zoning. Um, so hopefully, uh, I can be succinct and, uh, we do have the, uh, representatives from Luther here. Uh, but what, what you're reviewing, uh, is, uh, a couple of different entitlements. One is rezoning and then final, preliminary final development plans for expansion at Luther Hyundai. Uh, most of us are pretty familiar with the site. We, we drive, uh, when we're driving along American Boulevard or 494, we're familiar with where Luther Hyundai is located, but it's, uh, on American Boulevard, the west side of American Boulevard. And you can see it outlined in red here. Uh, the rezoning is very much in line with, uh, the comprehensive plan. Uh, we, the comprehensive plan guides us to, or guides auto dealerships into the, uh, regional commercial land use designation. The subject site, uh, where Luther Hyundai is, is, it does have the appropriate designation. Uh, and then the C1 district, which is the proposed rezoning, uh, is the only district that allows, uh, auto dealerships as a permitted by right use. Uh, so this, this is very much in line with what we hope to accomplish, uh, for all of the auto dealerships over time. Couple of images of the existing conditions. Uh, you can see, uh, you know, perfectly decent looking building, but as you'll see in images shortly, uh, Luther is proposing to have, you know, a more significant, uh, presence along the interstate corridor. Just another image of the existing conditions, freestanding signage, uh, you know, still predominantly a surface lot, uh, but expanding, uh, from what's there today. And you can see in the blue in the image here, this is just a site plan. Uh, they're actually expanding in three different locations. Uh, what'll be most prominent is along the north, uh, side of the building, along American Boulevard, where you'll have a new storefront, additional height and massing, and then, uh, a smaller addition on the west side of the building, and then the majority of the square footage, uh, towards the rear, the south side of the building, uh, for their service and auto, uh, auto body operations. Initially, the, the, the landscaping plan that was submitted, uh, you know, wasn't complete in our mind. Uh, there were some areas where additional landscaping was needed. Uh, we communicated that to the applicant and they've already been working on revisions to, to meet the city code. Uh, so for example, just to give you, uh, you know, provide a graphic, we require trees and parking islands. Uh, it's a pretty common standard and there, there was a deficiency there. Uh, here is, um, the latest draft. Uh, it's not an approved plan, but it's the latest draft or the landscaping plan of just circled areas that are showing landscaping where there wasn't any before. So, you know, really substantial improvement, uh, from what was originally submitted to what, uh, the applicant is presenting today. Really don't have any concerns with, uh, the applicant being able to meet, uh, the city code requirements for, for landscaping. Uh, parking is, is always a little tricky with auto dealerships because you have multiple different things going on. You have service, different types of service, uh, you have retail, you have warehouse and you have office. All of those different things have different parking calculation. So we have to figure out, well, what is the area? Do some basic math and then come up with a total. There's always going to be plenty of stalls on site, it's just a matter of allocating the appropriate amount for service, customers and employees. We came up with a, uh, a slightly different number than the applicant, which is to be expected, uh, but it's actually quite close. There, there really isn't going to be any problem with, uh, allocating stalls, uh, as required by the code. Couple of building elevations for you. Uh, again, uh, the, the massing and the physical presence along 494 would be, uh, increased. Most of the north facade is glass, uh, with some metal panels, and there's an interesting, uh, design that I think is unique to Hyundai, uh, in the metal panels. Uh, there, we did have some comments on some exterior materials. I think there's a pretty, some easy solutions, uh, you know, based on what we permit as a primary material versus secondary. I can get in more detail if you'd like. Uh, but suffice it to say, we communicated that to the applicant and, and they've, we haven't heard any issues with them, uh, addressing our comments. Another image of the building from various elevations. And we are recommending approval of both the rezoning, uh, as well as, uh, the preliminary and final development plans for Luther Hyundai expansion.[1690.51] and final development plans for Luther Hyundai expansion.
Thank you, Mr. Centenario. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember DeLaSandro.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. How are you?
Well, thank you.
Thanks for being patient with us today. Would you go back to the map, please?
I'm sorry, the site plan or?
The, the actual, the actual map where you had the rezoning recommendations? Yeah, thanks. So, am I correct in, in understanding that, that the parking lot is the thing that's being rezoned here from CS to C1?
Mr. Mayor, council member, the entire site would be? And so, the, the parcel that you see that's being rezoned is from CS 0.5 to C1, that includes the parking as well as the building.
Okay, so, am I correct in saying half of it is already C1 because on the left-hand side it's already red? I was confused.
That's actually, that's a different auto dealership. So?
Oh, that, is that the Mercedes? Okay, gotcha. Sorry, didn't mean to say another auto dealer. Bad. I, I know what that is now. Okay, I, now I understand. So, I don't have any other questions, thank you. I was confused about the map.
Yeah, the, the proposed rezoning would make the zoning consistent with?
I understand, yeah. Thank you, I apologize. I thought we were, first, never mind, it doesn't matter, I'm good, thank you, sir.
Councilmember Loman.
Just a real quick question on, on density, making that move. What's the density? Is it, or is it exactly the same requirement as we move to that, that zone?
Mr. Mayor, council member, are you referring to like the floor area ratio? So essentially built, like a building density standard?
Yep.
So the, in the C1 district that applies to auto dealerships, new auto dealerships, there's a 0.4 floor area ratio requirement, which is a, it's a, requires a significant building footprint, or multiple levels.
And what was the, the CS, or was it CS 05, 05? I know you can't have auto in there, but what was the?
So the?
Is there any requirement in there at all?
And Mr. Mayor, council member, there's actually, the 0.5 represents a FAR maximum. So, 0.5 is a 0.5 maximum FAR. That is not the direction the city has been going in terms of development.
Right.
We see higher intensity in appropriate places. And obviously, the, between a 0.5 maximum and a 0.4 minimum in a more modern district, obviously, that, there's a conflict there.
Right.
So going to the C1 district is, is, in our mind, the, the appropriate zoning district. And also, regarding FAR, because there is, there is a 0.4 FAR minimum, however, there are specific exceptions for auto dealerships. Because frankly, most of the auto dealerships do not meet a 0.4 FAR. So really, the standard is they have to maintain the floor area ratio that they have, and they, they have the ability to expand. And so, what the applicant is proposing tonight is in line with that allowance.
I, I appreciate that, because I know the last time we had this conversation, it was a big deal. And so, and I, and I know they stuck with it, and I just want to say, I want to say I appreciate that, and that, that actually is a benefit to the city, so, thank you.
Counsel, additional questions? Very good. You said the, the applicant is here? Anything to add, or?
Mayor, counsel, Steve Sabraski from Landform Professional Services. You know, wouldn't be here at 10:35 PM without having the opportunity to say at least thank you to somebody, so. Figured I'd do that. Again, nothing else to add, really, you know, it's always a pleasure to work with staff with our projects, and they do a great job, and we're really excited to bring this project forward.
Very good. And we're excited to see it come forward. Thanks much. Counsel, with that, I'm going to open the public hearing on item 4.2. This is a public hearing regarding the Luther Hyundai expansion, including the rezoning, the PDP, the FDP at 4801 American Boulevard West. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak on item 4.2 this evening? No one coming forward? Mr. Sable, anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, council members, no one is on the phone.
Last call in the chambers. Counsel, no one coming forward, no one on the phone. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.2.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember DeLaSandro to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further counsel discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Counsel, any questions on this? Any discussion to be had? Councilmember DeLaSandro.
I just have one quick question. I know that when we talked about, about the work that we wanted to do on auto dealerships in particular, we were hoping for them to get smaller in their format, and go up, and like, you know, that kind of thing, like we saw that with Walzer Toyota and everything. I don't know if the applicant wants to speak to this, but I'm assuming this would delay the potential for that to move forward because there'll be a lot of work being put into the building as it is, but nothing really done on the parking lot or whatever. And I don't know if there were any thoughts on that. Thanks.
Mr. Centenario?
Mr. Mayor, council members. From a staff perspective, we would love to see a multi-level auto dealership, but in, the applicant can expand on this, but it, I don't think it meets what they believe that their needs are. So they can, they feel they have, their needs are met by doing a 9,200 square foot expansion, which just doesn't necessitate a parking deck or a second level to the building.
Counsel, any additional questions? If not, I'd look for action on this.
Mayor, be happy.
Councilmember Loman.
Alright, here we go. Let's see here. I move to adopt a ordinance rezoning 4801 American Boulevard West from C205, C20.5 PD, Commercial Services Plan Development to C1 PD Freeway Office and Service Plan Development. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Mua, to adopt the ordinance rezoning 4801 American Boulevard. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Loman.
Mayor, move to approve major revisions of preliminary and final development plans for approximate 9,200 square foot expansion of Luther Hyundai Motor Vehicle Sales Facilities located at 4801 American Boulevard West, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Mua to approve the major revisions to preliminary and final development plans at the, at 4801 American Boulevard West. No further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you much for sticking with us late into the evening, and appreciate your patience, really do. Thanks much. Good feedback, yes, thank you. Onto our organizational business, and item 5.1 is a discussion regarding franchise fees. We have with us tonight Lori Economy Shouler, we've got Bob Simons, I see Julie Long, it's, we've got the whole team here.
The whole crew, yeah.
Good evening, welcome, thanks for, thanks for your patience.
Welcome. We'll wait till Mike can throw up the, thank you. So, as the mayor introduced us, I'm Lori Economy Shouler, the CFO for the city, and?
Bob Simons, a senior civil engineer in our street design and infrastructure area of engineering.
And Julie Long, city engineer.
And I will kick off the presentation, and I will move through it as quickly as I can. I'm going to start off and give a little background and history, and Julie is going to go through some current status and condition, and then Lori's going to move through our proposed 2024 rates. So back in 2015, the goal for the franchise fees, as you see, was to implement changes in the funding for the pavement management program, showing council's commitment to maintaining a sustainable and consistent funding source for street overlays, seal coats, park and trail construction and maintenance. The original intention was to take some pressure off the tax levy, but it was never intended to fund all of the pavement management program. There we go. A little bit of history on the franchise fees. As you see, in December of 2015, city council approved the implementation of franchise fees with the next increase proposed to be in January of '21. In April of 2016, we began collection of those franchise fees. 2016 to the present, we've used those franchise fees to fund the various different aspects of the pavement management program, and we'll go through some more of that information here in a minute. The summer of 2020, staff analyzed the franchise fee funding to determine if a delay was possible due to COVID-19, and management did delay the, the scheduled 2021 rate increase to 2022. And then in July of '21, council approved a franchise fee increase, which was our first increase since the start of the program, for 2022, which included future CIP multimodal projects, as well as the inclusion of sidewalks in our program. Here you see once again the different projects that are funded with franchise fees. We have park and right-of-way trail, construction and maintenance, street seal coats and mill and overlay, and not pictured in here is also sidewalks. Utilization of our franchise fees for our street reconstruction, which is part of our pavement management program, we do not use franchise fees for that. We use a property tax levy and special assessments. Our street mill and overlay is funded with franchise fees, and our infrastructure replacement fund are our Minnesota state aid maintenance dollars. Seal coat uses franchise fees, trails and park right-of-way construction and maintenance uses franchise fees, and sidewalks use two different pots of money. We use a property tax levy and also franchise fees as well. You see here our seal coat segments. Since 2016, we've sealed coated just over 150 miles of streets. We've overlaid just, just about 60 miles of city streets. You'll notice on this map, on the east side, you don't see as many street mill and overlays. East of 35W, we have very good soils here in Bloomington, and also, we have about seven to 10 miles of streets that don't have existing curb and gutter. Most of those lie east of 35W, and we typically don't mill and overlay street segments that don't have existing curb and gutter. It's just not cost-effective. They'll either receive a seal coat or a, a street reconstruction to install curb and gutter. You see here our trail reconstructs that we've done since 2016, right-of-way trails in blue and park trails in red. We've, since 2016, we've done approximately eight miles of right-of-way trails and about two miles of park trails. And in the upcoming slide, we'll show some future sidewalk and trail improvements.
So I'm going to give a brief update on the status and condition of the program. We have 341 miles of streets, and I'm happy to say, even though winter has been hard with a lot of the freeze thaw cycles, they're doing in really good condition because we're taking the right action at the right time, and a lot of our neighboring communities don't have that benefit of the PMP program, so thank you to council for your forethought on that. We have 210 miles of concrete sidewalk, and about 30 of those are deficient, either because they're in poor condition, or they are deficient in less than five feet of width, and we have a graph, or a map showing that coming up shortly. We have 43 miles of asphalt trails. About 70% of those are in the right-of-way, and the remaining 30% are in our parks, and about, just under five miles of those are in poor condition. This is the PMP life cycle, so if we built a brand-new road in about 20 years, depending on the underlying soil conditions, the road would revert back to gravel. So as you can see on the right-hand side, we, that's where we come in and put the seal coats and the overlays, and that's how we get closer to a 70-year lifespan for the road. And so that's key to keeping the pavement management program operational, and those franchise fees are critical to funding those activities. This is the map of five, less than five-foot width sidewalk. You can see it's all around our community. This is our non-compliant ADA ped ramps. It looks pretty awful. We have just under 5,000 ped ramps in our community, and about half of them are compliant. And this next one shows us what the compliant ones are, so it looks slightly better. And the thing that I particularly enjoy about this map is you can see where the pavement management program has gone through on 90th and 86th, and you can see that we've used those ones appropriately, and we're making progress on ADA compliance. One of the things that happened when you passed the franchise fee in 2021 was we authorized money to be used for sidewalks. And so, happy to say that in the 2023 reconstruct project, we're building our first brand-new segment of sidewalk. It's connecting Bloomington Avenue up to another section of sidewalk on East 80th, and I think it'll be really good for the community, so thank you again for that. This is a map that shows our future trails and sidewalks. Some of the ones up on the north side will be taken care of with the 494 project. We are working with our Park and Rec group to do some sidewalk enhancements on the park projects with Bryant and Tretbach coming up. We've also, if you participated with the Active Transportation Action Plan, we did some walkarounds last week, and they were really good and enlightening. I know Councilmember DeLaSandro participated on the one that was near Bryant Park, and staff had been kind of focused on 86th Street and how to get people across to Bryant Park. But during that walk-around, we also realized, oh, we also need to do that same kind of issue up at 82nd, so very beneficial. These are just the numbers for the geeks, and probably at quarter to 11, nobody's really interested in them, but we got 25 miles of seal coat projected in annual inflation. Overlay projections as well. We have been trying to mitigate the peaks of how Bloomington was originally built, so we've been in our peak year, and you'll notice we're going to go from 10 miles this year down to eight by 2025, so we're kind of shaving off that peak. These are the park trail projections, and then the right-of-way and sidewalk projections.
Moving into the rates and the numbers. So what we are looking for to maintain the program as is, and just make sure it is fed appropriately the right amounts. With the delay that happened with COVID, and then what we brought forward for 22 to 24 rates, or 22 and 23, we kept it at the lowest possible, so this one's going to have to be a little bit higher at the $1.35 add-on. And as you see, in two years from now, it's backed out in a normal range of 75 cents, and that's what we see every other year going forward, is something in that dollar range. So this is more of a catch-up at this point at the $1.35 for the residential. Just some comparisons with our residential cities. Our current rate is in the yellow line, and in the higher line there for 2024 rate, at a dollar, $5.95. We're on par then with Golden Valley, we're still lower than Broken Park and St. Louis Park. I also have to say, you know, just looking at this list of where all those cities are at, several of my comparable cities are looking at high, increasing their rates currently or later part of this year, so we're just a little ahead of time of trying to move our rates this first half of the year. It would not go into effect until 1/124. As the council has received last, late summer, the residential survey does have this. The residents of Bloomington are highly in favor of the paths and walking trails, excellent and good at 84% for both 2020 and 2022. And then, this fits right in with our Bloomington strategic plan of connecting and welcoming the community. We can break that down into further areas if you want on the BTT plan, but I'm moving quickly here. We do have an open house scheduled for April 13th, right outside council chambers. Then we would notice a public hearing right after that, and then bring it to the council May 1st for adoption of these rates. And then, it would go to the PUC, and then implement January 1 of '24 discussions. So I hope we were quick for you.
Very well done. Very well done. Counsel, discussion? Councilmember DeLaSandro.
Can you tell I prepared for this meeting? I apologize. Must have been, must have been a late night. Yeah, so, what can we do to, what can we do to make sure that? I'm concerned about the fact that we aren't showing the, an additional development in the sidewalk trail area comparatively here. It looks like the percentages are the same, like the same amount will go to each of the four things that are generally funded by this, and I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity for us to, I don't know, moderate that a little bit? I, I know, it's not, it's not unusual for me to talk about road diets around here, so I know you know what I'm talking about. I just, I'm, I'm, I know people want to see us investing in sidewalks and trails. And I'd like to see us proportionally increasing that if, where we can, is I guess what I'm saying. So that's just my feedback. Do with it what you want there, but that would be my feedback. Thanks.
Thank you, council member. Others? Very good. No, and no, I think it's a, it's a legitimate question, and it's probably one we need to have the conversation on. Perhaps not as we push up to 11 o'clock on a, on a March evening. It is, it'll come back again. Counsel, anything additional? Thank you. Thank you much. Counsel, council policy and issue update. Just to review what we heard in our listening session this evening. Sally Ness had questions regarding a DRC meeting regarding the zoning changes related to the Northwest, Northwest Health Science zoning change that we made recently, and it was confirmed that a DRC meeting was not required for that because it was not a development change, it was a zoning change. We continued the conversation on a few other things with Ms. Ness as well, and we heard from Marie Marion, who had questions about crime, and we promised to send to her the updates, the updated crime statistics in Bloomington, showing that crime has reduced, been going down each of the last four years, and is down 22%?
25%.
25% in the last five, four years. So, another good listening session for us, and thank you all for being there, participating in it. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for the benefit of the public. I want to just share that we're having a, not a joint meeting, we're having a concurrent meeting with the Bloomington Public Schools, School Board on Wednesday evening, and they are hosting this time. We hosted the last meeting, so we'll be over at Oak Grove Middle School where the district offices are located. That's on Wednesday evening. I also want to provide an update, positive progress related to Expo. The governor included the requested $10 million funding recommendation in the revised budget that he released last week. There are also bills that are moving in both House and the Senate that will make that same request, so we're optimistic with the support of the governor's office and, and support among our legislators that hopefully that'll be included when we see the, the final legislation come May. We're still tracking legislation as it affects the city and city interests generally. We had a touch base with our legislative delegation today, just to see where we're at midterm and, and what's happening. We still have several other bills that are in play that we're testifying on yet this week, and we'll continue to provide updates to the council as we move through the session.
Questions for Mr. Verbrugge? Questions for Mr. Brugge? Very good. Counsel, anything to bring forward as part of council, um, policy and issues update? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. I'll try to be quick here. It looks like I got about forty-five seconds. Um, I just saw some conversation on Facebook about water, and there were some concerns. Apparently someone dumped a bunch of radioactive waste into the water, and, um, there were concerns that it was in our water. I'm certain it's not, but, um, I thought that maybe there might be some proactive communication out there. Um, I know this time of year, people get weird smells and things in their water, as everything's melting and stuff like that, so just kind of helping explain that, but, uh, when it started talking about radioactivity, I thought maybe we should get in front of that a little bit, so...
I, I would agree. Councilmembers, I saw that discussion also, and, um, thought the same thing. Yeah, agreed. Counsel, anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Um, if y'all want to, I can tell y'all about that offline. Remember, my wife is a nuclear engineer, so I've got the, I got the four one one on that one. Um, yeah, no, no, it's, it's not as bad as it looks. I promise. Um, I, I just wanted to, I, I believe that you have a state of the city coming up, but I just wanted to make a public notice about that as well, don't you, sir?
Do indeed. We have our annual state of the city address Thursday morning over at the Ratus in Blue. I think, good seats remain is my guess, um, at eleven AM, and, um, tickets do remain, and, and people are welcome. Uh, if you don't buy a ticket, it will also be shown on Facebook, Facebook Live, so it'll be, uh, hm? Contact Mr. Brillert, uh, if you need to be registered. He'll be glad to help you, but, uh, looking forward to that. It's always a great event. Always a great event. I have to figure out what I'm going to say. Anything else, counsel? If not, I will look for a motion to adjourn. Motion by councilmember Curtis, second by councilmember Muah, to adjourn. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you much, counsel. Good work tonight. Thank you, staff. Uh, thank you to the folks who are here and who watched and who participated tonight. I thought it was a good meeting, so thank you all very much. Well done. Have a good night.